Good evening. I call this August 9th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On August 13th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Our mission statement, which guides our decisions every day, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Our four adopted core values are dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. Sergeant Penland has been a law enforcement officer for 21 years and is currently assigned to the Field Operations Division. We appreciate him being here tonight as our sergeant-at-arms. I will be delivering tonight's invocation. I am a believer in doing the little things well. No improvement is too small, no act of kindness or improvement is wasted. When you take care of the little things, how to take care of the big things is pretty evident. As said by Vincent Van Gogh, "Over 100 years ago, great things are done by a series of small things brought together." As we address the high-level issues and challenges facing Morrisville, provide us the wisdom to identify and take action on those items which may appear less important in the short term, but through aggregation of many smaller and tangible improvements, significantly enhance the quality of our life for our diverse community. All who are able, please stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Would any council member like to share anything at this time?
None.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
Go move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. There is one item on this evening's consent agenda, a resolution and budget ordinance amendment granting easements and conveying property to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for construction of various projects. Would anyone like to discuss this before we make a motion on it? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also carries unanimously, 7-0. We are now at item 8, administrative reports. There are two administrative reports tonight, a Morrisville Smart Shuttle program update and a senior center operating hours report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions this evening?
I do, Mayor.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I do have a couple of questions related to the senior center operating hours. Thank you. I read the report and I appreciate the thoroughness of your consideration for both staff as well as the community when you're proposing that we are going to not offer Saturday operating hours as a regular operating day. Is that correct?
Correct. We've moved from a set hours to a program-only basis. Program-driven activities happen on Saturdays.
So currently, for Saturdays, the type of programs that we have offered are special events and so forth. Are there any other programs besides like special events that are typically performed on Saturday?
We have not had any regular own schedules since last spring. We did a few art classes that I had. Most of the instructors that we've talked to since haven't had availability. A lot of the residents that we've talked to have just said Saturdays are times that they spend their middle night. But we do still plan to have some adventure activities. We're actually working with a volunteer group to have a model train exhibit in September that will be on Saturday, you know, which is a group of seniors that elaborate train sets.
Yeah, those are fun.
But those types of things, we will continue to look for. We will continue to look for classes as well that we can offer and we get interested in working with them.
Okay.
Just looking at, just going to a program-only basis, the set hours on Saturdays.
So if you did have a proposal for a program such as an art class, that would require staff to be on-site during that if that was recurring. So there wouldn't be, would there be rental fees or, you know, is that, you know, part of the senior programming for art classes? It's just an example that I'm using.
Anything that we, in classes, would offer, yes, we would have a full-time staff person or a full-time staff person on-site.
Okay.
We currently don't rent that space. We've had some discussions with the leasing agent about rentals, which, it's not explicitly written into our lease, but they said if we were renting it for activities for seniors that we could do that.
Okay.
But not as an open one.
Well, not like a birthday party, unless it's for someone who's 90, right? Yeah, so then we can tie that back. Thank you for that explanation. It seems like if we grow our Saturday programming enough, there may be in the future a need to keep it open, but at this point, you don't have enough to really justify that. I was curious about the evening hours. We have evening hours that go into 7:00 PM. Is that still, you know, viable for the future? And I was gonna just add that there are a lot of still-working 55 and older people, so having those evening hours is really valuable, I think, to our community, so.
And that is very easy why when we set ours to 8:00 hours, that we extended it to 7:00 beyond what we saw at, you know, the senior centers in the area. Because, you know, knowing where we are and a lot of our residents can still be working in IT or research or some other function, you know, at 55, 60, 65 years old. So we wanted to have the opportunity to, you know, come out and enjoy some time. We still have an exercise class that comes on Monday, June 6th. It gets good attendance. Left tonight, we have a group of amateur musicians there that play on Tuesday night. And so we are getting speaking activities, you know, that people are attending.
Great. Well, thank you so much for all the work that you do. This has been a very important addition to our Parks and Recs system, and it's dedicated to our seniors, so we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you all for waiting in class.
Councilmember Caramella.
Thanks, Jerry. I was just piggybacking what Vicky was talking about. The restriction in our lease that it is used for senior center, can that be amended? Because there, not now, but a couple of years ago, like even last year, this used to be GL Tecovando Place, right at the corner of, which is next to the ABC Store, for several, almost a decade. And the Saturday, Sunday was used for events. Several people used to rent it. It was Tecovando and weekends or Sundays, it was used for Sunday schools or name it, all kinds of things. For me, it is a great facility, it's a great location, and if we can use that for so many opportunities where people are looking for spaces, that we could capitalize it as a location, as a destination where they can have their events, would be good because I'm sure there's a lot of demand in this area. Saturday, Sunday, it all depends on our operations, but you open it up, they're there. So it'll go very quickly. So I just wanted to see if, is that a possibility? Because it's a good facility, everything set up is there.
I believe that would have to be an amendment to our lease, which we would have to have much more conversation with our leasing agent about that.
So we, Councilmember Garry McManay, if I could, so we could question that, raise that question with them. It is not impossible. I will share that we had some challenges in getting this lease negotiated to allow these type of activities. So we would have, I agree with Jerry, it would take some conversation and some understanding of what might be possible, but it could certainly be considered in the future.
And use the GL Tecovando, which was there for almost a decade, these guys, in the same complex, and it was used for other events other than the primary use. That was my basis.
Yes, sir.
Did anyone else have any other questions on this item? Okay. Thank you very much. We're glad that the senior center is getting so much use.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, we are now at presentations. We have three presentations tonight, a proclamation recognizing S'morrisville, Franklin Upchurch Senior Dog Park Concept Update, and a Morrisville Basketball Court Concept Presentation. I will read this Morrisville proclamation, then ask our Public Information Officer, Maria Bush-Guy, to come to the microphone to share some details about tomorrow's activities. This proclamation changing the town's name from Morrisville to S'morrisville for Wednesday, August 10th, 2022. Whereas community spirit is essential to the high quality of life enjoyed in Morrisville, and whereas residents enjoy consuming smores, which are a delicious treat made from graham crackers, chocolate, and marshmallows, and whereas National Smores Day is celebrated every year on August 10th, and whereas the residents of Morrisville are encouraged to celebrate National Smores Day by enjoying fun activities and eating smores at S'morrisville Community Park, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim the name of Morrisville to be changed to S'morrisville for Wednesday, August 10th, 2022. And Ms. Bush-Guy, if you'd like to share what's on the menu for tomorrow evening? We'd love to hear it.
Thank you, and good evening, council. We are very excited about S'morrisville tomorrow. Everyone is invited to come to Morrisville Community Park from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We're gonna have smores treats available. We also have a few partners this year. Trader Joe's will be providing all of the ingredients for our smores. We will have Royal Cheesecake on hand, Royal Cheesecake on hand. They'll be offering smores cheesecakes, so we're very excited about that. Also, anyone can go to Handel's Homemade Ice Cream tomorrow between noon and 4:00 PM to get a free smores ice cream. You just have to go and say S'morrisville Treat. We have two people that will be at the event tomorrow. First, Parks and Recreation are going to be introducing their augmented reality game. So folks can go to the Agent of Discovery app on the App Store or an Android store, and then you're gonna look for the Morrisville History S'morrisville Mission, and you're gonna be able to complete challenges at the event, and then at the end, you can go to the Parks and Recreation tent and get a prize. And then we will also have the Veterans Memorial Foundation available. They'll be asking for public input on the proposed Veterans Memorial site. So we're excited, and we hope that everyone can come and have a nice time.
Excellent. And there's also a vegan option for the smores, for those who wish.
Yes, vegan marshmallows and vegan chocolate, yes.
Okay. And the Handel's is up by Breckenridge in the McCrimmon Corners Schools Village. Okay, great. Thank you very much for helping arrange all this.
Thank you.
It's gonna be very exciting. Okay. At this time, Kyle Cooper, Parks Planner, and Randy Little, Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, will provide the Franklin Upchurch Senior Dog Park Concept Update, followed by the Morrisville Basketball Court Concept Presentation.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
First off, thank you for, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We're going to give, this presentation is meant to give you all an update on where we're at with the Franklin Upchurch Senior Street Concept that we presented to you in a couple of council presentations now. So we're gonna be talking about, on our goals for tonight, what we're planning on doing is sharing the progress on the research and the development of, oh, did I mention, oh, sorry. There we go. There we go. Okay, there we go. So we're going to be sharing progress on research and development for that concept, and then also sharing the cost estimate, most recent cost estimate that we've had after some research into the materials and getting feedback from the different town departments and the neighboring sick temple, from some of the items that they would be, we discussed with them. And we're also going to be sharing what our next steps are going to be in terms of more detailed design development, survey work, and getting all of Q's ready for potential further design. So this slide is going into the additional research and site analysis that we've done since our last presentation with you all. The first thing that we did was, we sat down with the developers for the sick temple. As I recall, several of you had some concerns about the, about some potential conflicts with the sick temple, with the dog park being right next door. So we figured we'd just go straight to the source and just meet with them, just to kind of introduce the project to them and get some of their feedback on the design. They requested four main considerations after that meeting, which was to have a denser vegetated buffer next to the temple, look at potentially doing a vinyl fence that would be opaque to help with screening, visually screening the dog park from the temple as well as blocking some of the noise. And they also asked us to consider moving the dog park fence 50 feet back from the property line just to have a more, a more spaced-out buffer in between the two uses. And then other thing that they mentioned was to switch out the parking lot entry from nearby where the temple was in order to utilize the existing road stub just to help to separate the traffic between the two different uses and just minimize any congestion. The next main thing that we looked at was getting some preliminary proposals for survey and surveying and detailed design work from some of the surrounding firms. So right now, the current estimate is about $100,000 to $125,000 for things like wetland surveys, tree surveys, buffer and easement surveys, and looking into environmental permitting for this particular site. And next slide. We also sat down with the town departments in press and middle meetings to get more feedback on the design concept and just see what their thoughts were on the design, if there was anything that would hinder us from, keep us from having, continuing to move forward. We didn't have any major obstacles from each of the, from each of the departments, so we feel comfortable with being able to move forward with more detailed design. We also looked at evaluating some of the different surfacing options. The first one was the engineered wood fiber, which is the same thing that we presented to you all in previous presentations. That's essentially the mulch, it's ADA compliant, and has a more natural look than other surfacing options for dog parks. The other option that we had looked at was Chappa Hill grit, which is a type of really fine gravel that you can use for like walkways and other uses throughout town. And the thing with that that we discovered was, there's a much higher cost material, there's a pretty significant labor cost, that's a heavier material to move around than the mulch. And we also found out from planning and from stormwater and a couple of other departments that it would be considered an impervious surface. So if we ended up using that for the dog park, that whole dog park, that full acreage change would be considered impervious, which would lead to a need for a larger stormwater pond sizing, unfortunately. So that was where we, where we had looked at for those surfaces. Stormwater department has asked us, in terms of the press and middle meanings, to have a more detailed wetland survey as part of our continued investigations into the site as we move forward into the design, just to make sure that we've hit all the wetlands on-site and that we're not missing anything. We also looked at, we've also been evaluating some pervious parking options to try to see if we, there's a way to help mitigate the amount of impervious on-site just to help with reducing stormwater pond area. So right now, we're looking at potentially a pervious asphalt, which would cost about $170,000 in additional cost over a regular asphalt parking lot. So that, so there's a bit of a cost differential between the two. So let me do the next slide. These next couple of slides are going to give you all a bit of a timeline refresher on the concepts that we presented to you thus far. The one that I showed you all on March 8th was about 0.95 acres of fence space, about 21 spaces of parking, and generally has the double-gated entrance and fences for the design utilizing this area on this side of the, on this side of the stub for Town Hall Drive. That cost came out to about 79, 700, 79, $795, $600 for that one, not including the optional amenities or the annual operating costs, so. The revised concept that we showed you all on April 19th took into account some of the feedback that you all gave us about investigating the, let's just get this, flip over here. It took into account some of the feedback that you all gave us at that original presentation to look at maybe adjusting, adjusting the design to the other side of Town Hall Drive and trying to address some of the potential noise concerns with the sick temple. And so that one gives you about an acre of fenced dog park space, 32 spaces on-site, and this would require potentially a second stormwater device in order to be able to treat that area. And so this also came up in one of our press and middle meetings. Stormwater had some concerns about this particular design being so close to, there being, to that particular stream down through there, and it being potentially close to that area there with potential wetlands in there. So we ended up investigating that a little bit further for the next concept that I'll show you in a couple of slides. This concept came out to roughly $829,800, just with some of the additional sidewalks and some of the additional stormwater pond development. That helped drive up the cost a little bit for that. Which all is to say, this is our current concept after we've met with the town departments and met with the temple, and this puts places everything back over on the other side of the, of the stub. It actually expands the amount of fenced dog park space to about 1.25 acres. We are looking at utilizing the existing Town Hall stub in order to allow for parking into the site there, just so that people would basically come downtown Hall Drive, turn left into the parking lot over here, and that parking lot would dead-end in front of where the proposed stormwater pond would be. We, if there's, if there's need for an overflow, we also have the existing 19 spaces over at the Indian Creek Trailhead. We are proposing a stormwater treatment pond up in here to help with draining out the parking lot, and we're also looking at sort of an informal bioswale that would run alongside the grade, alongside the dog, dog park in order to help catch any potential debris that comes off of the dog park and into the, before, and treat it before it enters into the stream area down here. We are also looking at adding in an opaque vinyl fence. You can see that line that runs along through here to kind of screen that, that part of the site from the view of the sick temple, and also looking at doing a denser vegetative buffer in through here, retaining the existing buffer, like the existing buffer plantings that we have to that area, and just helping to fill in the spaces there to help, help screen that area as much as possible. So let me move on to the next slide here really quick to talk about cost. So with the design costs that we recently got for the estimates, we bumped that up to about $125,000, which is $25,000 over the original $100,000. And our construction costs come out to about $305,000. The amenities cost would be about $377,000. And then the construction contingency, which is about 25% of both the construction and the amenity costs over here, would come out to about $180,000, just to give us some padding in order to help with any unforeseen costs. So that brings the project cost estimate to roughly $987,500. This isn't including things like the optional amenities or the annual operating costs at this stage, so. This slide goes over the different concept comparisons. You've got the parking lot counts and the amounts of the, each of these side by side, so you can kind of see how things have adjusted over the course of the design for each concept. And then this slide shows the general pros and cons of each concept with like just talking about the larger fence space for the current concept, more open fencing layout, utilizing the existing Town Hall Drive stub, and having less traffic congestion with the sick temple. Main con with that would be, the main con with this particular concept would be that we would just need to have a stormwater pond and bioswale for treatment of the parking lot and the dog park area, and we would just need to continue, we would just need to do wetland surveys and other environmental assessments, just to make sure everything continues to work with this particular design. We also presented the design to the Parks, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the four main topics that they came back with were that the members think that there's a, that 31 spaces is a lot of parking for this particular concept. They questioned the need for the bike racks, and they would like to make sure that the site has shade, whether it's a shade structure or we're utilizing the natural trees on-site, like we've discussed in previous council presentations. And they also felt that dog play structures were not really necessary for this particular, for this particular park, just because of the size and just making, just, it might, it might minimize, it might cause issues with dogs moving around. So one of the things that I recall you all just wanted to have a discussion about was usage options for the rest of the, of that lot, so aside from the dog park use. So we looked into it, and a lot of the rest of the site, aside from that dog park area, is pretty close to where stream buffers and floodways are on-site, so users would need to be low-impact based on some, on the discussions that we've had at our press and middle meetings. The primary option that we're looking at right now would be an educational sort of interpretive nature trail through those areas to help kind of guide people through the natural spots. We're looking at potentially incorporating a smartphone app for like educational challenges and nature facts by like scanning QR codes and potentially interpretive science to educate people about the natural areas, like and potential plants and animals that they can find in this particular area. Which leads us to our next steps. The overall timeline that we're looking at right now is about one to two months for development of a request for qualifications and bidding that out for the design survey work. This one had a little bit of, it required a little bit of additional time due to it needing to require, like comply with ARPA requirements, so we need to add in some additional language. We need to get with our fiscal recovery officer and our contract, and our contract manager to make sure that we've got all the legal language needed in order to comply with the ARPA requirements. We're estimating about six to nine months for the design and the environmental assessment of the site, just to give us enough time to do all the surveys, make sure we've got the right permits for environmental permits for the site, and get a, like a detailed design and construction documents pulled together. We're estimating construction to take about nine months just to give us enough time to address any potential issues or concerns that might come up during construction. And as a quick reminder, we've got about a million appropriated in ARPA funds just for the FY '23 budget at this time. And so this leads into the discussion. So I've got two main topics that I wanted to touch base on for this. First one is the, asking if you all have any questions about the updates that are made to the overall design, and if you haven't, we wanted to get your feedback on some of the amenities such as the thought about using pervious parking, whether or not you would like, you would like us to pursue investigating dog park lighting within the dog park itself. We're required to have, we're required to have lighting in the parking lot, but we wanted to ask you all if you felt we needed to investigate doing lighting inside the dog park fence area itself, and then asking you all if you feel that shade structures are necessary for this particular dog park, and then asking you all if you feel that dog play structures would be something that we should pursue for this particular design. So that's, that's what I've got for you all on here. I can scroll back up to the overall concept if you'd like, or I can keep it on this slide to assist with the discussion. Just let me know.
Okay. This is probably a good place to start. As we ask questions, people might ask you to move to a different slide, but I'll start with Vicky Scroggins, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you. A lot of work has been done since the last time we had, a lot of work has been done since we last saw both of you for the dog park. Thank you. I am a fan of perv, of pervious parking, you know. Northwest Park has pervious pavement, and it's a sensitive area with water. This dog park is near sensitive areas with water, so I would be more supportive of pervious pavement. Do we know if the temple is considering pervious pavement or any of their plans for stormwater management with the construction of management with the construction of the temple? Because they'll, they're going to have parking nearby, and if we could do something to kind of, you know, mitigate that, I, I, I really think that is a win-win for the town. The number of parking spaces is okay because we have the pew house nearby. So it's not just the dog park. It's also the pew house that may or may not, you know, be a beneficiary of that extra Let's see. I like shade structures. It's North Carolina. It's pretty hot. I was wondering with the one-point-two-five acres, if that can be sectioned off for smaller dogs and larger dogs? Is that still in the design? Okay. Good. Okay. And then, um, if we don't have enough money to put lights within the dog park section, could we at least build it so that it's ready with power? And when we later have extra money, we could then buy the lights for the park? But I would really like us to invest in making the park, um, electric-ready, but not necessarily, um, spending the money on the lights if we don't have to. It could be a contingency.
I think that's doable, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by myself, please.
So exciting. So I didn't see any reference to a membership or a card system or something of that type to make sure that only people that are paying for dog park access are accessing the dog park.
Yes, that is actually included in the overall cost estimate that we presented. The plan is to have card scanners to be able to do that, exactly what you just said, do that membership. We're looking at doing something similar to what we have at Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, just use that same system in order to kind of tie it in, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay. That's great. I'm also in favor of pervious parking. And I don't think we need play structures, but I've never seen any that weren't stupid. But I do think we need shade structures. Although if the lot is wooded, so I mean, if we can keep some of the trees, that would be shade, so maybe we don't need structures, but we need shade for sure.
Okay. Would it be fair to assume that you guys are both fine with the current rather than the original or revised that were being presented?
The latest.
The latest? Okay. Just making sure. Um, I'll go, and then Councilmember Garamella, I'm fine with the current. I think that's a good improvement. The most recent, uh, concept, I like that a lot. I'm also in favor of the pervious. I think the parking spaces are adequate and will be used by Greenway users as well, so I'd like to keep as many parking spaces as well. And especially since it's pervious, I think shade structures will be important as well. So I think that would be good. I don't think that we necessarily need the dog park structures themselves to play things for the dogs at this time. If that's a need later, we can add that perhaps. I think the lighting will be really important. It gets dark pretty early, and people want to walk their dogs after dark. So, um, I thought it might be possible to use a lighting system like the, we have a tennis courts that it turns on for an hour if people come. So it's not necessarily on until ten or eleven if it's not being used. That might be a little bit better for the neighborhood as well. But those are my thoughts, and I really appreciate how you guys worked proactively with the stormwater crew to make sure that we're doing everything as well as we could. So thank you very much. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
Thanks, Kyle, for the presentation. Pervious parking, I'm fine with that. I certainly say lights are needed, um, because it gets dark by five-thirty-six during winter time, and especially that area is completely wooded. We don't know if snakes and other things are coming. You're just letting the dogs without having a vision of where they're running, what they're doing. And because lights are super critical, especially with the wetlands and all the things around it. Shade structures are also equally important because if it rains, the dogs don't care, they run, you know. I'm, you know, I had to take it no matter what, because they run. At least we need some structure to be under while they're doing their running. And also, one more addition I would highly encourage to have is a water connection so that you can hose off, you know, the dogs when, when they're totally muddy and like rain and other things. And I'm hoping they have facility for water and other things, right? I'm not a big fan, I, play structures is okay or not, I'm, I'm not married to that, but at least the amenities of having water for the dogs is there. And so coming to the concept design, like, you know, I wanted to ask if you go back to the previous slide that shows the difference of three.
Which slide?
The, the one previous one. One more.
I'm sorry.
Uh, which has all the three designs together. Yes, that's.
The comparison chart?
Comparison chart, yeah. So, so I, I hear, like, you know, the current, you're putting everything on the right side of the stuff, but I would, before we go, like, I wanted to ask, the bioswelle that we're using as a new terminology had, had challenged, why do we need it? And now we are using the word bioswelle. Many apartment complexes have dog park. Are we telling them to have a bioswelle? Or what is, how are they doing it?
I didn't.
Oh, he's asked, um, are we asking other apartment complexes about the bioswelle? Is, is there a need for us to have that bioswelle there?
So that would, so that bioswelle came up as kind of a, as a response to, like, some discussions with stormwater that we, that we had had. They want us to at least try to prevent, I mean, dogs do their business, so they want us to, they want us to like try to, to, but they want to at least have a way to be able to treat that before it hits the, before it hits the stream.
I, I get that concept, right? Like, is it in our UDO that requires bioswelle? Because I, I know several neighborhoods have dog parks and apartments have dog parks, but I have not seen a requirement in our UDO calling for, you know, a swell, so wanted to ask that.
Good evening. Good news from our manager. That's a good question. Um, we don't have anything specifically in our UDO saying we need to have a dog park treated. Any development that comes in now, we'll review it. We strongly suggest that they do that, or, you know, have them tied into this, you know, with the drain for that way. And most of them do comply. The reason we're pretty adamant about this location is just the proximity towards the stream. Pretty much, you know, the dogs, they'll go to the bathroom and urinate in the whole area, and, uh, you know, well, that's when we flush down towards the stream. And since they're so close, we want something cheap alternative. You know, it doesn't have to be designed towards any specific extent, but it's kind of runs the length of the dog park where it drains down, so it kind of intersects some of the people matter and color form for these two streams.
Okay. Yeah, because I wanted to have the same standards that we use for other developers as, because if it stays in the UDO, let us do it. Nice to have, obviously, is, is good, but I understand. Thanks for that. And my, my other question is, I'm not a big fan of any education because we have saw, uh, we are, we are talking about Sawmill, then we are having a Crabtree Nature Park that is educational, too many educational already in the near proximity that we are already having. But the possibility of having a fenced area on the south, like, north and south, like on the other side, like revised version, how, what is the cost of it? Because I, if we can keep it natural and fenced in, then, you know, I'm looking for future use. If this becomes small, at least you have both the areas that can, you know, the dogs can run. And otherwise, we, we don't want to get in a situation like they'll say, we have one more dog park, you know, how much capacity are we doing for future state? So that is one of my primary asks is, this, I understand, like, but if we can keep like a pseudo-natural things that they can run, um, and fenced in, then that also does the trick.
So are, are you asking the, 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 uh, land that we're not using, how much it's going to cost to have it fenced in for future use?
Yeah. I mean to say, because, uh, the, if, if the purpose is, like, you know, you're just restricting all the amenities, parking lot, you're already spending all that amount of money. That's not changing. You know, um, if we can fence that, the south lot, I say, like, because north and south, uh, if we can do it and keep it more natural, keep the trees to whatever you can, um, then it, if some, like, you know, dog parks have a lot of dogs, which are alpha dogs and others, they, they get into a separate kind of, uh, like, a fight. So, but at least they have this flexibility that you can, you know, go to this one during the daytime, no lights, nothing, but at least it is an option that they can run and then they can come back, but have the one on the top illuminated, so at least, you know, it can go on.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? You're talking about like the middle option here, the property on the other side.
Combining, combining both together, type. So that, uh, we don't need to do amenities or lights or other things, you know, at least you fence it up and, um, like, remove your trees, what is needed for, like, the mobility of the dogs and let them be natural and, and do it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's what's right.
Yeah. Bear with me, the, my apologies if the acoustics in here are not fantastic.
I totally get it. No problem.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that to see if, and if I'm understanding you correctly, is seeing exactly what the cost is for, I'll say, concept two as well as three. So you have that open space area that's fixed off, but not, um, as polished as the, uh, the other ones? So, yeah, we'll take a look at that and, and report back.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
So let me just, I'll start there. So I guess the question is, can, can we, in the future, if this gets too crowded, what we're looking at at the current concept, if that gets too crowded, can we go back to plant, the plan in the middle and do some kind of a fenced-in area that can be used in addition in the future? Is that, is that a possibility, or is that property not being, um, suggested because of its location?
It would probably be more the latter. Once we, when we discussed it further with stormwater, we had, they had some concerns about it being so, about this particular design being so close to that particular stream connector that runs through this area through here, especially with the ongoing work with the, um, with the Morrisville Carpenter Road widening. They've added in a new call route, they've added some new call routes into there, which potentially could lead to additional flow through that spot there. So, and so the current design came after we had that discussion, like, further discussion with them to, in order to try to respect that stream buffer and move it, like, move it a little bit further up. Where we have that, where, uh, where we have this particular area right here, it gets really, it gets very wet, um, like, especially after, like, really heavy rains. So it's, would be, it would be kind of, it would, it would be kind of an issue to be able to, like, do, do it in there. However, on the other side, that's about a good two, it grades up a lot more, it's a lot better of a grade, so it gets, stays a lot drier overall. So that was why we, so after we had some more research done with the, in the area, that's why we elected to try to move it back over towards the other side. Does that answer your question?
Y- yes. But there are potential in the future, we could look at something, maybe, maybe.
It would just have to be light, it would just have to be light. If we did anything in this area, it would just have to be like low impact in order to be able to utilize it, so to speak.
And that's not surprising, that part is so wet, because it is so much closer to the stream, so that, that's not surprising. Um, I, I just have a couple of quick things that haven't been brought up yet. I wanted to go back to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee's feedback and their first two bullets. I think I know the answer, but I just want to, um, ask it, because they asked about too much parking and the need for the bike racks. And I, I'm going to make an assumption, because I think we all talked about this before. I think I even talked about it. That's a part of our UDO requirements, is that correct?
Yes, it is. Um, I've actually, I was actually pulling out a bit of an email correspondence that I had planning about that. So to answer your first question about the bike parking, um, that is required out of public park, and the greater of six bike spaces or one per twenty-five vehicle parking spaces is the requirement. So if we had, um, so about, about, for example, twenty-eight vehicle spaces or like, close to thirty-one, you would need six bike spaces, um, in there, so to speak. So six bike spaces would be the minimum that we would have for like twenty-eight to thirty-two parking spaces, unfortunately.
And I think the last time we had this discussion, I even questioned the need for that many bike racks in, for this use. But, okay. Um, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll see when the design comes. And so that's another question I have. So when we go through the design process, is that going to come back before council to look at as well?
So we will be giving quarter, like, so the plan is, since this is a CIP project, we'll be giving quarterly updates on where things stand with the, um, progress of the project and the design, so to speak. But we'll be, like, we'll be developing the design with the designer and updating you all in quarterly capital projects and updates, so.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you. Um, because I guess my only feedback on the whole design, and I know that's not all cut in stone yet, I know there's, you know, the devil's in the details and will come. But when we talked about the enhanced buffer space and the opaque fence and all that, I, I, I just, you know, the properties adjacent to us, like the Sikh temples property, they also could beef up their landscaping and offer some things on their property too to help. So I want to make sure that, um, you know, that, that there's some of that happening as well, that it's not, the onus is not just on, um, on this project and on the taxpayers of Morrisville. So just to, um, throw that out there. But again, there's more to come in their site, they'll, you know, th- there's more to come on their site too. So I think we need to keep that in mind. And as far as the current concept plan, I'm fine. I'm fine with where we are today. That, that's just fine. The, the pervious parking, I'm fine with that too. I think that's important. I like the comments about the dog park lighting, maybe at a, at a minimum, need to be prepared for it, and then maybe that's one of those things that doesn't come in phase one, that maybe we add later, but at least be ready to accommodate it. And I say that because, um, pricing these days has just gone through the roof. So, um, if, if, if we need to back off on something, to at least be prepared for the lighting and then add it later. Yes, to some kind of shade, whether that's natural shade or some kind of structure. And I think I would agree with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee about the dog play structures. I think they're there to play with each other, so I'm not sure how many, how much more we have to add to that at this point. And I want to make sure that's all I had to say. Yep, that's it right now. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah. Um, I'm just going to weigh in on, I agree with, uh, everything or the other council members. I think pervious parking is the way to go. I understand the need for the bioswelle, being that close to the creek. Um, I'm not in favor of putting the dog park on the south side of the easement, because it is so close to the wetlands and the creek. I'm in favor of having the lighting for night for, during the winter time. I think that a lot of people will want to use the dog park after they get home in the evenings, um, so they would need that lighting. And what else? Oh, um, yeah, I agree with, there's not a need for the dog play structures. I mean, if, if we find that people want that later on, that can always be added, or it can be a project for Boy Scout troop. And I think that is it. Thank you for this, uh, for these options. It's, uh, it's good to see this coming to fruition.
Okay. Did anyone else want to weigh in at all? Uh, Councilmember Rapp?
No, I just, um, I like the pervious parking. I like the lighting in the evening. I like the design and layout. I just think, um, you know, based on just getting around a lot of parts of the town, many residents are really wanting this kind of a dog park. So I feel really good about you guys coming back with this option, so, thank you.
Okay. Um, you were taking notes just like I was. Sounds like you have consensus on the current plan and pretty much everything except for the dog play structures? Is that kind of where you feel we landed? Do you have any other additional questions for clarification?
No, thinking of, so I think, do you have any? No, I think that, so I think, do you have any, any? No, I think that really helps us kind of focus in on the optional, like some of those optional items that you, that we were wanting to get y'all's feedback on. So thank you all for, sorry, providing your feedback on that.
Okay, wonderful. So we're, I think we're all very excited that this can keep on moving forward. So make that RFQ happen and get us a vendor. Sound good? Okay. Thank you very much. You two gentlemen also have the next presentation about basketball courts.
Director, switch, switch. Okay. Mayor, good evening, council. Good evening. Randy Little, Parks and Recreation Cultural Resources Director. I want to talk to you about the town of Morrisville basketball court concept. I know there's been some, some, some talk about adding some additional basketball courts in town. So the staff and I had an opportunity to discuss and we want to share what we've discussed with you this evening. Just as an overview, again, we want to share, you know, the evaluation of the options that we, that we reviewed as well as give you a review of the preliminary concept as well as the cost, as well as we just did have a discussion about the concept at its conclusion. How we evaluated this project here, just getting this concept is we looked at existing town-owned properties. We looked at a minimum of two courts in a, in a location, as well as we looked at the proximity of our existing basketball courts too as well. And we'll get into that here shortly too as well, as well as accessibility to amenities that is needed to support basketball courts in town. One of the things we did, we did look in the local area. As you can see here, Morrisville has two existing courts with two proposed courts. Church Street Park with the Southern Lot Expansion Project. Cary has 19 existing parks with courts, as well as Apex has four existing parks with one proposed. And the locations that we considered in town is Morrisville Community Park and Harris Mill Road Fire Station property. The concept that we thought would support basketball courts, the addition of basketball courts outside of what I just mentioned, Church Street, the Southern Lot, was, was Morrisville Community Park. It provides the current footprint that's, that's needed. We do have some, some flat land, some open space. And the site is recommended not only for that, having the space available, but having access to existing parking as well as existing restrooms and also add a playground too as well. So all those things are added into that site recommendation. The site that we did not recommend was, was Harris Mill. And I think we've all kind of discussed this before, that property here, there. There's no public parking or restrooms unless they're built. That's going to add on to the cost that we'll go over later. Patrons wouldn't be allowed to use the fire station restrooms or parking lot, as well as there's, adding the parking lot as well as the bathroom is going to add additional costs to, to the project. As well as, as I mentioned earlier, the existing basketball court. We know we're getting ready to renovate Shiloh Park. They have a new court primarily with that renovation, as well as adding two courts at Church Street, the Southern Lot. If you really think about it, if we added any basketball courts at Harris Mill, they're all on one side of town. Morrisville Community Park gave us an opportunity to put basketball courts on another side of town to create that equitable access to all our residents within town. That's why we didn't choo- choose Harris Mill. Some of the amenities that, that we selected was we'll have two side, two full-size basketball courts. They will be lit, courts for evening use, we'll have water fountain, we'll have benches. Of course, we'll have goals and backboards, we'll have access to sidewalks, of course. We'll have signage as well as landscaping, bike racks, as well as trash cans that are, that'll be needed in this location. So here's the concept that we came up with. I know we've kind of went through the process. It'll be two fenced-in basketball courts. As I mentioned, it's already existing parking. I know it's kind of shadowed out, but you can, everyone knows where the parking is. We'll have a 2,200 square foot stormwater pond. And as, as mentioned previously in the previous slides, you know, there's already pre-existing restroom as well as bathrooms. We have the large flat space for development. And it provides us access for basketball courts on a different location within town. And, and some of the, the cons that I have to kind of work with staff through is some of the relocation of our current programs and events. I know that space there, we currently house, have our movies in the park. So we would have to, to look at where that could be relocated, as well as we may need some grading since that is a very, very flat, flat surface.
So I'll take over here. We also, similar to what we did with the dog park, we had pre-cemental meetings to show that concept that we just showed you all with the various town departments. The primary thing that came back was from the, some of the comment, most of the comments that came back were from Stormwater in that they have some concerns about how flat that area is and how they, that area could properly treat the stormwater. There's only, there's only a two-foot grade difference from the edge of the sidewalk to the rear of the proposed courts, which they said, which the Stormwater staff say wouldn't be enough depth to allow for runoff after the pond detention. They're currently, Stormwater staff is currently investigating potentially a new technology on site elsewhere within the park to treat the additional impervious surfacing for that. We don't have the, we don't currently have what the cost would be for that at this time. They're working on getting some estimates back from their contacts with this, with this techno, for this new technology. Essentially what, essentially what it would boil down to is using, is basically underground stormwater detention, so to speak, in an area elsewhere on site. So that's, we're still working out the details on that and we would have to get you some more information on that. We are also doing community outreach for that and more town staff is working on meeting with the, with the focus group that attended the town council meeting to discuss their interest in, in basketball, for basketball courts within the area. So I'll let you handle on that one.
Correct. Yeah, so our annual, well, not our annual cost, the estimated cost, as you can see, is, is over half a million dollars, encroaching to almost 600,000. So, and that's 25 for the design, over 200,000 for the construction. The amenity cost is around $87,000. And again, the lighting is, is a big portion of, of the construction is, it's 160,000. So and the construction contingency is about 114,000. It kind of rounds up to a little over, over five, half a million dollars. $586,000 would be the estimated cost. Our annual rating, our annual operating cost for this programming will be very, very minimal as I kind of talked to Public Works. Once it's constructed, it's really just ensuring that it's maintained. It's not a lot of operating cost. As, as you can see, additional equipment and amenities if selected would be water meter fees, electrical costs for the lighting. So that would be our annual cost for that. And this program concept is based on open court play and not anticipating the offsetting revenue at this time. So it's really to get these courts available for them to be used at this point. And as a part of the discussion this evening, this is a capital project. This is a development, a concept development. There's no funding appropriated for it right now. And, you know, we would have to, if this is a priority, you would have to look at the other C I P projects too as well. So that's our presentation. Are there any questions at, at this point?
Okay. I'm going to start with Mayor Pretam Johnson, followed by myself.
So the need for outdoor basketball courts is, there is a need and it is an important one to fulfill. And I, when I knew this item was coming before us, I was really excited. I wanted to be able to support this fully. But I am, I am struggling with this location. So let me ask a couple of questions to make sure that I, my assumptions are correct. The, is this the drawing that you have or the over, the aerial that you have? Thank you, if you pull that up. Is that to scale?
It's, the, the scale on there is that is basically zero feet to 40 feet on there. So you've got that rough scale down in the bottom, right? So that little scale bar is about 40 feet wide.
Okay, so you, you, I guess where I'm going is right now the, the courts are aligned kind of parallel to the parking. If you put them perpendicular, would they fit or is that not?
It would fit. The problem is if, the issue is that it would, that rear court would run potential risk of getting, if there was like flooding, there, there's a higher risk of that one potentially getting impacted by that. So that's why we stuck it closer back towards the parking lot.
Yeah, and I know why you chose this site because the parking's already there, the restrooms are there, there's access to water. It is, it is perfect and for all of that. But it, it is also a widely-used open field. I walk through this park a lot and it is rare. It is rare that I go by here where there's not a group out there playing something, doing something. So it gives me great heartburn. And we, we have already developed the back part of the Morrisville Community Park for tennis courts and pickleball courts and, you know, and I was supportive of that. But, you know, that concerned me deeply because we, we did a lot of development back there and upset that land back there, again, for a need. Have we looked at, and, and I understand that when you talked about the Shiloh and the Harris Mill site, I, I'm 100%, I'm, I'm there with you on that. Did you look at the Cedar Fork District Park? There's a lot of land in the Cedar Fork District Park. Have we identif, did we evaluate that at all? Because that would also help bring this amenity to the southern part of Morrisville versus having them all kind of up on Church Street. Although I'd be fine with putting another one, quite frankly, up at Shiloh, but I understand the concerns there too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. I think one of the things, and Cal, correct me if I'm wrong, when, when it rains, it does, it does flood. So that's one of the things that we did discuss too as well, after having this conversation internally. You know, we thought this would probably be the best option for, you know, ready, well, I'm not going to say, well, yes, almost ready construction primarily, since we have that parking and those kind of things. But it was initially discussed, but, you know, after they reminded me of the flooding potentially and, and all that stuff, we kind of settled on the community park as a, as an option.
You know, when, when I first looked at this aerial, it took me a minute to figure out where it was. Obviously, I knew it was Morrisville Community Park, but at first I thought maybe it was over at the location closest to our Public Works facility. Because there's some land over there too. We used to, that used to be, back in the day, that used to be big enough for our Easter egg hunt. So there's some flat land over there on the other side of the playground. And, and honestly, I, at first I thought that's where it was and I was excited. But then when I realized, nope, we're talking about the only open field, that gives me great pause. Not to say I won't support this in the end, but it gives me great pause, that pause that we really think about what we're doing here in this park. So those, those are my only comments right now.
I'll go next, followed by Councilmember Garamella. I too was a little surprised when I saw this and I was like, we don't want to give up a park. But then the more I looked and I remembered 3rd of July fireworks and things like that, it's a really big field and I don't necessarily think that we need to move movies in the park. I think they just go a little bit closer to the woods and I think there's still room for that. Or you can even put the screen over by the woods and have a lot of people coming the other way. But I think this is probably the best location to have two courts, which is really central. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I'm a little concerned that the stormwater grade might not meet our needs. I'm excited about the idea of doing something with the stormwater like we did at Northwest Park, which preserves space and that won us an award. Just thinking a little bit outside the box about expanding for future concepts, if we want more basketball courts in the future. The idea of adding an additional one at Shiloh besides the one that we're making, there seems to be space over there. I see people playing cricket in the big field, but there might be a way to configure two courts over there, which could make, meet our needs. Also, in sort of brainstorming with other people, we have three elementary schools in town, including Parkside and Morrisville Elementary. And if we could partner with them perhaps and enlarge the courts that they do have, I think Morrisville Elementary has one. I don't think Parkside has one. So if we're willing to partner with them and build, that would just be a single one, but that would be more opportunities to have more courts in town for our users. Other thoughts? I do like the fencing and the lighting. I think that's important. You mentioned two basketball courts, possibly at the Church Street Southern Lot. Is that two hard courts or are you counting one of the sport court, the sport court as being the second court?
No, two basketball courts.
Okay, because a sport court can also be a basketball court.
It, it can, yeah.
So that would be three perhaps there if we're making the sport court big enough.
Yeah, we, we would remove the sport court to, to include two basketball courts because we couldn't have three on, within that, within that area. So we have two hard court surface basketball courts and then volleyball along with the parking and the cricket.
Okay, that's the first I've heard of that and that volleyball would be sand volleyball? Okay, so this is up for discussion, but hopefully that'll be coming back to us, more of the Southern Lot amenities. I'd support one hard court for basketball at the Southern Lot and one sport court that's large enough to be basketball. Or it could be tennis, it could be pickleball. I have one in my backyard, so I know that's really multipurpose. So instead of just doing two hard court basketball courts, it's an amenity, a sport court that can be lots of different things. I think that's the real attraction of the sport court. And I mentioned Shiloh Park. And if we could just keep our eyes open in the future, there might be properties along Church Street, which would be suitable. We talked about a possible dog park at Kudrow Lane way back when. There seems to be a large area of land there next to our greenway. Two basketball courts might fit lengthwise there. If the apartment building is willing to let us use the land and build courts that'll be used by their people, that might be a win-win. So those are all my thoughts on this concept. I really appreciate you bringing it forward. As, as I said at first, I was a little bit hesitant, but I think this is a good spot and I don't think it'll be using up so much of that land and that open park space that it'll be really detrimental. I think there's still plenty of land around that. Now, Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins Johnson, please.
Thanks, Randy and Kyle. Is there a requirement that we have to have two at the same place or you can have one and then one? You know, is that your, for cost of construction and other amenities, are you trying to club both together?
Yeah, there is no, I guess, I forgot the word I'm looking for. There is no, I guess, a hard fast rule that we have to have two in one location. We just like two would, would help support the interest in basketball. So we could put one here and find another location where, where one is acceptable too as well. That, that may be feasible, but we just.
So the, the reason I was asking is when I was looking, same as Liz, Mohan is on the crowd, his daughter, and my son is to play soccer on that field and my son is to run on the opposite side. And her daughter was pretty good, his daughter was pretty good. But this location is very used by a lot of kids and a lot of people here. And I'm concerned with the stormwater pond, you know, it's like, is it an open one? Is it like the kids, you know, how, how will it affect the rest of the other places, you know, while they're going around? If we can find, I'm okay with the concept of having, but somehow if you can scoop it in a different location in the same area, go vertical this or someone, one there, so that it, I, I feel like when you're coming in, as Liz says, it's an open field. I don't want to get like a block with two tennis courts and their fences. You know, I want that concept of where you're able to go in and on the sides it is there and the parking is there, so you can just have a walkway, so they can go A D A. And if it gets flooded, you know, what are the things, right? Like to basically clean it up, you know, is a maintenance crew go and clean it up? Because if it's raining, they're not playing basketball either way. So those kind of things are coming because the ambience of this park is this particular area that we are talking, you know, when we go there. So I like the concept, if we can scoop around to get those somewhere so that it is not a distraction. Like it's pretty much, I feel like this is taking the central piece. like, if pretty much, I feel like this is taking the central piece, um, of the whole park, and there's a land behind it, which people will not even feel like, you know, opening, like welcoming.
Okay. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Thank you. Um, I really do like the concept of the basketball court, and the demand is, is, we do have demand for basketball. I am against the location. I think that community park now has as much, um, impervious pavement, tennis courts at the new addition, and we would do ourselves a disservice if we took away more grass and trees. We need large, open spaces, and that does serve that purpose. The Cedar Fork, or, yeah, the suggestion by Mayor Protem Johnson about looking at the Cedar Fork District Park, even though it's a floodplain, is a valid, uh, suggestion. There's bathrooms, there's parking, there's a lot of good space. There's a concern, it, it is a floodplain, and it will flood. We, we're gonna get those floods. But I have seen some park systems where they design playing fields and roads through floodplains, and the road will flood, and you just won't play that day, but the road does, um, i- it's okay. So I'm thinking that if we know it's going to take water, is there something we can do to mitigate that? But it's such a wonderful location, and it already has a lot of the requirements that you mentioned in your proposal. So I would be in favor of exploring that as a possible location and, um, you know, see, see what costs and options we have. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Ral, please.
I, I have concerns about, um, the space it would take in the open, the open part of the park, but I do like the concept. And so, you know, my only concern, well, my question would be, what's the timeline we're looking at here in terms of, you know, if, you, you're coming to us with this concept plan, but if we were to prove something, how quickly would we be able to move on? Because there's a lot of demand for this, and I don't want to delay it, you know, another year, and then we're back to where we were, even wanting courts.
At, at this point, this concept, this concept is, is not funded, so it has, it would have to be prioritized or against the other things that's.
Okay.
That's currently in that, so, um.
Would you be willing, it doesn't, like, I would still support it at this location, but it doesn't seem to me that a majority of the council would be in favor of that. Is it still viable for you to look at the Cedar Fork District Park? Because I'd much rather have something that everybody agrees upon. I mean, we know there's a need for these basketball courts, but just based on what I've been hearing, I mean, you do, is that something that you can do even if it isn't a floodplain, or is it unrealistic for us to assume that that can happen?
No, we, we could definitely look at it and then bring some, some suggestions, like we did for the dog park, bring a concept back and see exactly what it is, but, of course, I defer to my planner here, um, and, and see exactly what it is, as well as communicating with other departments in town, too, as well. But we can definitely go down and see exactly what that looks like and, um, bring that information back, uh, to everyone.
Okay.
See you later.
Well, I just want to make sure that we continue to look at our solutions and we're not, you know, intentionally, not intentionally, but delaying progress on moving forward. I mean, if we can get, you know, Cedar Fork as a viable location and that we can still have two courts there, you know, I think we should, we should look at it and then compare both options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, seems like you've heard from us. Sounds like there's support for the concept, so I think we want it to be on our CIP for consideration. Sounds like, from what you presented, six hundred thousand might be a decent placeholder, um, but that's up to budgeting staff and you guys, as you determine. But I think we do want some basketball courts, and where they're gonna be is still up in the air, as we discuss and socialize this as a council. And we'd love to hear from the residents also about their ideas, about if they think that this, um, this wouldn't work well, this would be a real problem for the park going forward. Um, not gonna do any intentional outreach, but we hope that people are listening, and, uh, we'd love to hear from them on this as we move it forward. Do you have any other questions from us, or any other clarifications?
No additional, no.
Okay, so it sounds like you've got some things to look at, and, uh, we look forward to hearing back from you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We are scheduled for break at seven twenty, so we are right on time for that. Um, so it looks like a fifteen-minute break, so why don't we go ahead and reconvene at seven thirty-two?
Do you want to do public address first?
Um, would the council like to go ahead and do public address at this time? Okay, in case anyone's waiting to speak, that would be fine. Um, Town Clerk Smith, do we have anyone signed up for public address in person?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have any emails, uh, that we've received?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight who would like to speak on any item of their choosing for three minutes? Okay, we have concluded public address, then. We will go ahead and take a fifteen-minute break. We will please reconvene at seven thirty-three. Thank you.
I'm new batch, but I just.
Seven thirty-three, we're reconvening. At this time, we're gonna go into our public hearing item. There is one continued public hearing on tonight's agenda, proposed UDO text amendments for tree preservation, open space, perimeter buffers, and landscaping. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate the item. Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, council. Um, I have no true updates on these amendments. At the last town council meeting, council took a series of straw poll votes to narrow down the various options I had proposed previously, um, down to recommended options. So everything that you, you saw in your packet agenda was what is currently proposed, so I have not prepared any additional options to, um, for council to review or decide between. Um, as you just mentioned, Mayor, the public hearing is still open. It would need closed prior to taking any action on the amendments. Uh, and finally, council is scheduled to take action tonight. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, thank you.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and, uh, take care of the public hearing first? Town Clerk Smith, was there any public hearing comments emailed to us?
No, sir. There were no email public hearing comments, and there were no individuals signed up to provide in-person public hearing comments.
Okay, is there anyone here in the room interested in providing public hearing comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, if it's the will of council, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Um, do we have any questions for Mr. Lawson on this item? Okay, any comments before we vote? Okay, this one's been a long time coming. Uh, if you want to bring the language up, just read it verbatim.
Yes, please.
I'd entertain that motion. I'd like to recognize somebody.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy-six dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to tree preservation, open space, perimeter buffers, and landscaping.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, seven-zero. Mr. Lawson, thank you very much. That was a couple of years in the making. Great work.
It was, it was. Thank you very much. Thank you, council.
Kind of anticlimactic there at the end.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
He has good job.
Suddenly, we're way ahead of the agenda schedule.
Woo-hoo.
There is, uh, one action item on tonight's agenda, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Baker Residential, establishing land dedication and greenway payment in lieu for the park at Town Center. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate the item. Mr. Lawson.
Right, good evening again, council. Uh, so just to begin, I'll just note for the rest of council that, um, staff met with both the mayor and Mayor Protem, uh, last week. Just to answer a few other questions, uh, at the mayor's request. Um, other than that, I'll just kind of remind council why this agreement is before, um, council tonight. Uh, the proposed development is required to meet a minimum density of six units per acre. Um, Baker Residential is willing to dedicate up to six and a half acres, around five more than is required, in order to help, um, their proposed development meet that minimum density. Uh, and that would be dedicated to the town at no upfront cost to the town. Um, part of the reason for this is the town had previously identified this area for a stormwater project, which, um, the town's stormwater engineer, Ben Mills, could provide more detail on. He is here tonight, if you have questions about that. Um, the development will cover any costs associated with the land transfer, and has also agreed to submit a payment of lieu for, of two hundred fifty, two hundred and thirty thousand to the town for construction of a greenway after the stormwater project is complete. That is estimated by town staff to be a hundred percent of the cost of the greenway construction. Um, so this agreement has been developed through negotiation with Baker Residential and town staff, uh, with town staff attempting to find the best, um, way to accomplish several competing values, including, you know, just having the developer install the greenway, constructing a stormwater project in an area of town, um, that receives drainage from a couple hundred acres, and finding, uh, you know, a way to establish town control and long-term ownership over this property. Uh, so with that said, town staff recommend approval of the MOU and are available to take questions, both myself and, uh, stormwater staff. Uh, representative of Baker Residential, Mark Bowles, is also in attendance. Thank you.
Okay, so if it's okay, I'll, uh, like to begin with a comment that I've prepared in advance, and I really appreciate staff's, uh, time last week to meet, um, and answer some questions about this. Um, so from my perspective, it seems that essentially the develop, purchase the land with lots of strings attached, and it is incumbent upon the council, um, well, it's, I believe that it would be best if the council not necessarily detached those strings for the benefit of a single developer and to the detriment to the rest of our taxpayers. The uncertainty about the cost of the greenway if built in or over the floodplain or floodway years from now gives me great pause. Our taxpayers were recently burdened with what may end up being five hundred thousand dollars of costs, which were by policy and design just supposed to be paid by developers. I would hate to have a similar outcome in this case. I would like to ask if town council would support asking staff to explore the option of having the builder construct the greenway on land outside of the floodplain and floodway concurrently with their building of the structures. This would eliminate the need for that portion of the MOU, and if the developer would like to dedicate the environmentally challenged portion of their land in order to meet the density requirements, we consider, can consider that in exchange for the parkland payment in lieu dedication, with the condition that they are still responsible for the greenway construction in full. If these do not work, I would ask town council to direct staff to explore other options, such as a performance bond for the greenway for an amount estimated, in the worst case, for a boardwalk greenway along the entire length, and whatever is not spent would be refunded. Um, would any council members like to comment at this time? I see Mayor Protem Johnson and Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson. Mayor Protem.
Um, so thank you, Chris, for bringing up the, the meeting that was held, that not all council attended. And I think it's important that we share a couple of facts that came out at that meeting that did not, um, did not come out in a prior public meeting, so the rest of the council probably doesn't have all, all the information. Um, so, um, and, and everything the mayor just talked about was talked about at the meeting as well. So, um, can we, can we talk a little bit about, when we talk about, um, the cost to taxpayers, and I, I, um, as I expressed at the meeting, um, I think we all are, are, have the, the cost of, to the taxpayer and being, uh, the fact that we are good stewards, we try to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, that shouldn't have to be said, but it's important to say that upfront. So that's number one. I think we're all, we're all in that same boat. Um, one of the things we talked about was the fact that this six and a half acres that would come under town control now with this agreement, um, if it did not, and this is the developer, this is the developer offering this, this is a voluntary, um, process here. Um, if they did not offer and give the six and a half acres, um, the town would be held responsible for an easement permit when we do this environmental work that we intend to do in the future in this area. And so to be really clear, this environmental work that we want to do is related to water quality, so it's, it's a, not an insignificant project. So, um, can we just talk a little bit, Chris? Can you share with the rest of the council about what an easement would cost, um, a future council when we, when we entertain this project or take, undertake this project?
Sure, I'll do my best, and, and if you'd like to chip in also. So I, I, I don't have specific numbers on how much an easement would cost, uh, but I'll say just that with the dedication of this land, um, you know, when, when this was being worked through with staff, again, working for those kind of, um, competing priorities for town between stormwater, between, uh, greenway, between other, other various items in this, um, it, it seemed just that the town being able to acquire this land and take just long-term control over it, um, as well as having the greenway paid through a PIL, um, seemed to make sense at the time, and that is why, uh, staff has brought it forward. Um, you know, if the town does not acquire it through this agreement, say the agreement were denied somehow, um, if the town wanted to pursue this stormwater project in this area at a later date, would have to acquire the land, um, via another way. Um, I, I do not believe at that time it would be donated to the town or dedicated to the town. I, I don't exactly remember the, the percentage cost that, um, another staff member had prepared, but I believe it was thirty to forty percent. Ben, do you remember at all? The cost of easements, or anything like that?
Um, I would say typically for small reasons, for smaller projects, we pay pretty much of the tax valium, values, but this is such a large easement that we would require, it takes up pretty much the whole acreage of that property, um, anyway. Um, like, uh, I mean, in the past, it, it's really up to the property owner how much they want for the, you know, construction easement, but if it's seventy-five percent of the cost of buying it, it could be more. Um, it just kind of depends on the property owner, you know, some other conditions.
And, and I would also note that, um, several meetings ago, uh, Ben and I brought forward a development agreement for International Drive, and there was a lot of environmental permitting costs associated with that, that were unforeseen at the time, uh, several years ago. Um, and just, just want to reiterate that, in part due to that, in part due to other things, staff, staff has, you know, truly does take, um, very seriously the taxpayer's money and making sure that, um, the town is getting the actual costs in payment of lieu, as opposed to, you know, kind of what happened in International Drive, and now the town have to come back and pay more. Now, with that said, you know, town staff's reviewed the numbers, um, you know, repeatedly asked the developer to contribute more and more and more, and that's what got to that two-thirty number. Um, I, I can't stand here tonight and tell you it won't cost two-thirty and one dollar or less than that or higher than that, but that is the expected cost for that greenway. Um, uh, and, and last thing I, I didn't mention is, you know, again, I want to remind the council that, um, developer could move forward with a variance application. Um, at that point, they would not be required to dedicate, uh, the land to the town. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and, and, um, so let me just, the variance, um, that they could ask for, staff would support. I think that was the other thing we talked about at the meeting as well, that would, that they meet all the prime requirements.
So a variance is a quasi judicial process that's set on standards set by the state. One of those standards is environmental features. Um, with, with the amount of floodway and, and flood zone on this property and other environmental features, um, generally staff don't necessarily recommend, but we think that this is a, it would be a prime suitable case for a variance due to the amount of environmental, uh, features. And again, those features are, or those standards for a variance are tied back to standards set by the state.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And then the last thing that, uh, came out in the meeting, too, is we talked about the fact that, um, we're asking for a memorandum of understanding, which is unique, that we typically have not done that before, and we talked about the fact that, um, our attorney, um, um, because the developer is giving so much, um, and there, there has been so much, uh, negotiation that recommended that this be, um, part of a mutual, uh, memorandum of mutual understanding, so that we could clarify all of this, because there was so much involved.
Yeah, Town Attorney Gray recommended to staff that while, uh, most of what's happening is within the, the framework of the UDO, it is a little unusual and probably be best to memorialize this with, uh, an agreement between council and, uh, the developer.
Okay, thank you. And those were just two things I, I don't know that we, well, I know, that we hadn't all talked about before and hadn't come out in, in, um, discussion, except for that meeting. And I will tell you, I, um, I have not changed my opinion. I think this is a, um, I, I, I And I will tell you, I, I have not changed my opinion, I think this is a, I gave my opinion the last time we talked about this too, I think this is a good memorandum of understanding, I think the developer is giving. I would rather have the six and a half acres under town ownership and control than in someone else's hands to do something with in the future or not. I would much rather have it be under, you know, this council's control, this staff's control, and future councils. And, and I understand the, the, the greenway, the desire to have the greenway built tomorrow. I am, I first wanted to tell you that I've been a champion of greenways from day one in this town, and so the more we add to our greenway system, the happier I sure am, and I know our residents are. But to add an orphan piece of greenway that connects to nothing is not always really helpful. And, oh, by the way, as we heard over and over again, that building the greenway today, it may not end up being in the right alignment. And even if we do build it today and it's potentially happens to end up in a really good spot, this project, this environmental project of water quality and stormwater that we're talking about, the construction will have to go over the greenway. And even if the greenway's not ripped up, it, it could be damaged in some way, costing the taxpayers even more money to have to rip out and then, and replace. So I, for all these reasons and for, for all the work that you've done, I'm supportive of where we are and I appreciate the efforts that went into negotiating on the behalf of the town to come up with a really good solution for our citizens.
Councilmember Stronge Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Thank you. I know this is a challenging project for both the staff and the developer because of the wetlands issue, and I think there has been some innovative discussions on how we can attain the value to the town through a payment in lieu and also for water quality, which to me is priceless. We really need to be mindful stewards of the water quality, and it's a concern of mine the way the legislature is going about riparian buffers and having municipalities not have as much control or authority related to water quality. And for us to have this opportunity to have control of this area, it's not buildable per se, maybe for nature, you know, a future elevated greenway, but I am in support of having the town secure this property through a mutual MOU. The MOU would add a level of transparency about the intent and the use of this land. I think staff can outline how valuable to this, you know, taxpayers, this agreement would be and mutually beneficial. I would also like to point out that we do not have a shovel-ready plan for the greenway. So staff is doing their best to estimate the payment in lieu based on our formula, but we, we don't have that design complete, and the location of that greenway really doesn't have a true designated area. So there's risk in rework and additional cost. So I guess in summary, I am in support of staff's recommendation with this proposal, and I'd like to hear from my fellow council members as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you. Chris, I wasn't on the council for the International Drive negotiations. Could you explain to me exactly what happened there and how, I'm sure that you've taken steps to mitigate the possibility of it happening again, but could you just briefly give me a high level on that?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So where to start? Essentially, the town has a transportation plan which shows the general alignment for roads in the future, and if a, if a developer builds next to it, they have to build either, you know, if they're on one side of the road, they've built their half, if they're on, if it's split property, they've built the whole thing. So where International Drive came up and ended, there was two developments built, one was built maybe three years ago or under construction now, one was built maybe four to five years ago. Essentially, the way the road ended, there was a stream there that they couldn't get permitted at the time, so they paid a payment in lieu to the town for that road construction. What was not thought of at the time, as far as I understand it, I wasn't here when this happened either, there was not significant studies into the exact boundaries of those streams. So when this development named Spark came in and staff first being, asking them, hey, you know, we've got payment in lieu money, would you mind just finishing International Drive for us, we'll give you that, you know, they said sure. Then we, as we looked into it further, they hired people who specialize in permitting with Corps of Engineers. These, these folks unfortunately told us that it's like the worst possible alignment for the way these streams are set up, and it doesn't seem like anybody thought about Fast forward to probably several months ago when Ben and I were up here, we're still looking into that stream alignment, but essentially the way the town's plan had laid out that road, it was just the worst kind of scenario. I'll say that we're still working with these folks that were, sorry, folks that were hired to work with the Corps of Engineers, and the final payment has not been determined yet. So the Corps of Engineers takes many months to kind of figure out what that final, final payment will be. I would say that, in my view, this one's different because, well, mostly because our own stormwater team, the town's own stormwater team, is designing this area and will realign where the environmental features are via a permitted project. So that gives us, at least in my view, a lot more predictability about uncovering special circumstances and hopefully not having the worst kind of scenario. To go back to International Drive, if you remember my presentation, I'm gonna do kind of a hand gesture here, you had two streams that came up like this and ran parallel with the road. So the way the town's transportation plan unknowingly back in, as it designed 2015 and 2019, it just happened to lay out a road needed to go right there along the worst kind of possible scenario. Yeah.
So when you, okay, so when you reroute the stream or in this property, reroute the stream and do whatever it is that you're gonna do to the stream to, to increase the water quality, well, so we don't have to build the greenway at that time either if there's nothing to connect it to on either side, right?
No, when the town accepts the payment in lieu, I believe the process works, it comes back to a capital improvement prior reservation by town council, so wouldn't have to. I think preliminarily, a few of us have looked at, would it make sense to kind of combine that project or time them in a certain order? But no, there would be no, the town would then have that money and could hold on to it and determine when the best time to use it would be.
So I guess what I'm getting at is presumably there could come a point where we would be, we would be laying down a whole bunch of greenway in that area, not just on this property, but connected pieces of greenway also.
I would, I would say that's accurate.
So because, I mean, then surely there would be economies of scale, right? I mean, it.
Getting a little outside my expertise, but I, I would generally say yes. Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, I appreciate your hard work on this, I, you know, I cannot pretend to be an expert in the diversion of streams, or, you know, frankly, or the building of greenways, so there's that. But, you know, I appreciate all the work that you've put in on this, and I think that, you know, I do think that you, both the town and the developer, thought outside the box on this and found a way to do what's right for everybody, so I appreciate it, and I'm in support.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
During the last meeting, the stormwater engineer presented a drawing of the, I guess it was a concept design for what that stream would look like. Do you have that available?
I think it's an attachment. Eric, I don't go to attachments.
I think it's an attachment.
Oh, it's that one, oh, that makes more sense. Where are we? Oh, I think it's this one.
So is it possible, does it, yeah. So on that drawing, where is the greenway?
So the greenway is running with the center of silver line, so that would be the yellow line.
Okay. And is the intent that that greenway through that area would be similar to the greenway that's along Hatcher Creek greenway where it's raised?
Yeah, I would say since we're doing earthwork in there in the vicinity, we could, we're gonna try to make it an asphalt greenway and raise it up right there at the center of silver, if possible, without it being gone.
So it would be asphalt, but you would do slight grading to raise it higher?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. If the, it may be easier to go back to the other drawing, but either way, if the, you were to build a greenway today through there, like as if the developer built the greenway, where would it have to go?
So, so if the, if the greenway were built today, where would it have to go?
Is there any room?
So to give, at least to discuss a little bit how the greenways were laid out in the transportation plan, essentially, Mooresville's drained kind of north to south, and everything runs to Lake Crabtree. So coming off of those laterals north to south, you have kind of some of the flood areas, some of the riparian buffers, generally sewer easements for town to carry because everything flows to the lowest point, and on top of those sewer easements is where the general location of the greenways was established. Now, at the end of a day, the greenway is a line shown on a plan that's not a surveyed drawing, it's a, it's a line drawn on a map. But essentially, generally when a developer is building somewhere where a greenway is called, the greenway will sit on top of the town to carry sewer easement. So they're both 20-foot wide easements, town to carry needs to come do work, they try to work around the easement or the paved part, but that's kind of the general theory of how they were laid out. So to answer your direct question, it would follow, it's hard to see in this picture, but underneath that green dotted line, there's generally a kind of where the trees are not there, the sewer easement somewhat follows that, it's generally on one side of the buffer.
But all of, is, is that a wetlands area?
Currently, I was going to improve some wetlands, but it's, it's designed in a way to kind of minimize that. So there are a little bit bigger wetlands with engineer designed where it stayed mostly out of certain wetlands and out of the floodway for the most part, there are so much across the floodway, but it was really trying to design and minimize any type of requirement of that.
So if that greenway was built today and then however long in the future you came to do the remediation for that stream in that area according to that sketch that's in the stormwater plan, what would need to be done?
So our limited design seems in a totally different location, so we'd either have to, I don't know if we'd want to accomplish this, most likely we'll just have to tear it up and replace and the greenway.
Okay. I understand. I'm in favor of what staff is proposing here with accepting the payment in lieu.
Councilmember Rao.
I don't have any questions, I'm fine.
Oh, sorry, I thought you saw your thing.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
They've been answered. Councilmember Guerra Miller.
So Chris, I'll ask this question again, I had asked, the money that we are taking PIL covers the environmental, if we had to do a sidewalk, you know, that covers the charges and other stuff, right? I just want to ensure we, from the lessons learned from the international, that we are collecting the correct PIL, or are you comfortable with that?
I am comfortable that our, that the town's engineer, the town's stormwater, what's your title, town stormwater engineer, has reviewed the numbers, has looked at the environmental permitting fees that are included in the PIL, and have determined that they feel this is an acceptable amount.
Perfect. And then the second is, if we are doing this plan, do we have, I know it's CIP, but is there a timeline, like in the next five years, Ben, are we looking, or is it 10 years, so that at least to anticipate when the screen will go?
Yeah, currently when we, Stormwater built our CIP list, which is very recently, we didn't have this property, so this project kind of ranked not in first place, it just kind of got approved, so it was placed in the second phase, which is five to 10 years out, but if we end up being in this property, I'll support moving this project up, since we've ranked out that we actually have the property in hand and be ready to go, you know, to build the project. If the, you know, if the greenway is important, be built sooner rather than later. So with that being said, if we wanted to move it up, you know, sooner, it could happen in a few years as opposed to five, 10 years.
Okay, then, then my question is, if we do the design work of this, and then once the design is formed up, can the greenway go at that time, or you have to only do after the whole work is over for this project?
So for this piece of property that we've built, I would go ahead and have the design for the greenway incorporated into the project, so we could even have, I don't know if, we have to keep the money separate, it'll be outside, I don't know if we could have it constructed at the same time, or have it structured home right after we built it, or we already have the pad and graded out and just come lay down the asphalt, but I think there's a possibility, you know, combining the two projects for that point.
I think from my point of view, I'm expecting this to be combined because the whole idea of waiting is to ensure that we don't have to do rework. That's, that's how I look at it. But, okay, so it is five to 10 years. And what's the plan for the rest of the others? I know it's not yours, but Chris, what's the plan to connect these ones?
To connect this section of greenway with other sections?
Yes.
So then, if you see on the screen here, there's a neighborhood that's already constructed directly to the north, it's called Myers Point. Back in 2016, they also dedicated a payment in lieu of building a greenway to the town. Further north than that, there is a landscape supply company directly north of that, there's another neighborhood which has already built their section of greenway called Hampton Place. Not exactly sure to answer your question in my mind, and I, I'm in planning, not in capital projects or any other department, you know, Myers Point could be connected to this if built at a later point. The landscape supply company, we, there's no control over there as long as they continue to operate as is, but at least those two neighborhoods possibly could be connected.
And what about the down, like, you know?
So further down, the, the plan, eventually it just runs into Mooresville Carpenter Road. I think there's some leeway on where that can be designed.
So in short, what I'm trying to get is, you have answered, once we have a design for this one, are we planning to have all this connected one shot? I'm assuming so, you know, because you have the money. Other than that, you know, landscape company in the middle, you have PILs for all of them. So is there anything that, from our town point of view, you take the PIL, but you can bank it for 20 years? Then I have a problem because I want it to be used at the right place where they have given the PILs.
Sure. Councilmember, I think we're a little outside my expertise in the specific planning and zoning, but in my, in my ideal mind, and hopefully I can speak to that, several sections of greenway are constructed on this, along Church Street. This section is fairly long, if the town. If the town can build this within the next five years, that'll add another section past that. I truly think just developments as they come along Church Street, that's one of the last major sections that hasn't been developed or redeveloped to town. They can just add on as it, as it works north towards Church Street Park eventually.
Thanks. I think I'm in favor. That makes practical sense, to have the design of this and then build the greenway. Thank you.
Okay. We've heard from everyone who wanted to chime in. I just have a couple additional questions, so we're in the second round now. So, the landscape company you mentioned, unless they change ownership and they do some kind of renovation, there will be no contribution from a developer for that at this point? If we want to complete that part of the greenway, that would be on taxpayer dollars?
Correct. If they, if they don't do some sort of development to trigger that requirement, and they just continue to operate as a landscape supply company, they would not be required to dedicate anything to the town.
Okay. So, it's nice that the towns has already done theirs up top. You said the Myers Point, we already have some PIL. Do you think that PIL is sufficient at this time? I think it was 74,000.
I will say, it is significantly less than the per linear foot of the PIL we're accept, we would, the town would accept for this development. So, with that said, I think the current prices of things that the town is getting 100% of the cost for this PIL, for this neighborhood, if we look at a per linear foot, then Myers Point most likely did not submit enough money 2016 to pay for that PIL today, if you look at that per linear cost foot.
Okay. And if we're not building this for another five years, the 230 might put us in a similar situation. That's just a statement, not really a question. Quick question for Ben. Generally, stormwater facility maintenance is incumbent upon the owner of the private property? Would that be the case after we complete this as well, this project?
Well, if we could put this project, we'd either have an easement, or we would have wooden land. So, at that point, we would definitely be responsible for maintaining the string, make sure we don't break it out or anything like that.
So, we'd be purchasing the easement to construct and the maintenance easement essentially?
Correct.
So, we'd be responsible for that. Okay. Quick question for our attorney. Is it true that the property owner pretty much decides how much of the assessed value they get to receive for an easement? 75% was mentioned in the meeting, up to 100% was mentioned. I'm just trying to clarify whether or not that's really how that works, or is that an appreciation?
Reese, I'm not sure I understand.
For an easement, we have the choice of waiting and doing an easement later or accepting a donation now. If it's $84,000 per acre as assessed, how much of that would reasonably be thought of as what we'd have to pay in order to do the stormwater project? Is that very flexible? Is it up to the developer?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of negotiation. I think that was maybe a rule of thumb or a rule of experience that was mentioned earlier, that 75% of tax value, but really, it is a matter of negotiation between the town and the property owner. Town has the ability to condemn for stormwater reasons. We've never done that. It's not something that a lot of towns do. We do have that authority. But then you're going to end up paying a price that's set by an appraiser, battle of the appraisers.
Right.
condemnation actions. So, I think typically, it's been a matter of negotiation, and that can vary depending on circumstances.
Okay. My main concern, as was mentioned, we're all good safeguards of our taxpayer dollars, is having to spend a lot more than what we're receiving at this time. Is there any way to associate some kind of performance bond, completion bond, so that the 230 is a number up to a certain amount? We would refund any difference when it's actually built? Do we have any kind of authority to protect our taxpayers down the road so we don't end up with a Myers Point situation?
Well, the EDO does allow for performance bonds, but it's typically when the developer's required to do a improvement, then they best to bond and ensure they're going to do the improvement.
So, is that a greenway? Would that be considered an improvement?
It would not. In this MOU, there's no requirement on the developer to do any construction.
But if not for the MOU, they would be required to do the construction of the greenway?
Yes.
So? So? So, we're waiving that right to be refunded for the construction cost essentially through the MOU?
If the developer was going to be required to build the greenway, the town could require a performance bond to secure that obligation. So, yes, we are not taking that.
Well, and may I clarify on that just for one second? So, performance bond, and I, sorry to interrupt, but so, performance bond is essentially, let you use an example, if a road's going to be built, when the town is approving a plan for the developer to build that road, their engineer submits a cost estimate to the town for how much they expect that road to cost to be built. Our engineering department approves that, and we hold on to a bond as a town in case that road doesn't actually get built, it gets built halfway. So, it is not necessarily a exchange for how much it actually costs to get built. It is just holding on to that money to protect the town in case something happens where the road only gets built halfway.
Okay. I voiced my concern. We're still in the second round. I see Councilmember Skargun Johnson would like to share her thoughts.
So, I actually have an administrative note. I received information that Chris is not being heard on the live feed, and I don't think we can resolve that right now, but if you want to speak a little louder, that'd be probably helpful in any other speakers we have tonight at the podium. So, just a little bit of housekeeping. The other thing is, I'm ready to make a motion when we're completed with our second round.
Okay. I don't see any other questions for the second round. So, I'd entertain a motion. You want to bring the language up on the screen?
Sure.
I was hoping we had special language. Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to recognize someone who'd like to make this motion.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-260-0A of the Mooresville Town Council approving a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Mooresville and Baker Residential of the Carolinas LLC on August 9, 2022. Second?
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? TJ? So, that carries 6-1. And thank you very much for all the hard work of staff to try to negotiate a great deal for the town. We are now at future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. We have a few of them here. As noted earlier, tomorrow is Smoresville. We'll be serving up those beloved treats from 6 till 7:30 PM at Mooresville Community Park located at 1520 Mooresville Parkway. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food, goods, and live music from small and local businesses from 8 AM to 12 PM every Saturday. Please join us there. The Town of Mooresville Police Department will host its first law enforcement torch ride for Special Olympics on Saturday, August 13th, from 9 AM to noon. The cost to participate is $30 per motorcycle rider and $10 for passengers. Proceeds will support the law enforcement torch run, which supports the Special Olympics and nearly 40,000 athletes across the state. The charity ride will begin and end at Mooresville Community Park, 1520 Mooresville Parkway. Registration begins at 8 AM, or participants can register online before the event. See our police department's social media or contact Tracy Skeeter at T-S-K-E-E-T-E-R at townofmooresville.org with any questions. And we are back at Church Street Park for the minor league cricket finals weekend. It's a very busy weekend this weekend. If you love cricket or new experiences as much as we do, then join us for a free fun-filled weekend in Mooresville, North Carolina on August 27th and 28th. See our social media for more details. There will be two semifinal games on Saturday and the national championship final on Sunday starting at 5 PM. There's also some games this weekend if you're interested. The Fall White Goods Collection Day will be Thursday, September 8th. Registration is required and must be received by Monday, September 5th at 5 PM. Learn more and register at bit.ly/msvwhitegoods. And as always, for full listing events, please see the Town Council calendar at townofmooresville.org. This time, we're at council and manager comments. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson.
Thank you. I just have a couple comments. First of all, I just want the council to know that I'll be sending you all an email about a letter we've always done for Indian Independence Day. Like to see whether we can do that again. I forgot to remind everyone, it's been a busy week. Send you a separate email on that. Speaking about Indian Independence Day, I'm so proud. I just want to say that many members of our community are from India, so they have one mother country where they were educated, and then another mother country where they've immigrated and had real success in America. And recently, the League of Immunities did a really inspiring article on Satish Garamela, Councilmember Garamela, and I just want to thank him for his servant leadership and the quiet way he goes about helping our community. The three things I've learned from him over the years, which I think we're all grateful for, is his humility, his empathy, and his strong leadership. So, I just wanted to say it was a great article and hope I get my signed copy soon. The couple things, the Wake Early Career College was great to be there for the kickoff with the mayor, a game-changing event for our town. Just want to thank Wake Tech, Dr. Rawls, Chris Hagerty, the members of the school board, all of our staff who worked tirelessly for this, and wish Principal Abby Stotzenberg all the best in the future. Fire Station 3, very excited about that, a great groundbreaking. I attended the Wake County opioid settlement meeting. Mayor Protam was there. Just some data I want to share with the community. There was 198 drug overdose deaths in Wake County, 1,091 drug overdose emergency visits, and 74.7 opioid deaths with illicit opioids. So, you know, Wake County, Raleigh, and Cary are working to get 35.9 million over the next 18 years to address this. So, I'd like to see if Mooresville can be involved in those efforts as well. Cricketeer M.S.K. Prasad, who chaired the Indian Selection Team Committee, visited Mooresville, and when I was at Church Street Park with him, he said that our park was one of the best fields he's ever seen. And finally, it was great to be at the Kiran Bazaar, and I want to thank them for everything they do. Just a couple of events, I just want to save the date. August 16th is the procurement summit for veteran businesses. That's at 8 AM at the McKimmon Center. If you're a veteran business, please come out. And Alan Thomas, the SBA Director, former Mayor of Greenville, is going to be the speaker. August 18th, Secretary of Technology Jim Weaver is coming for the IT Serve Alliance meeting. If you're in the tech industry and you want to learn about his great ideas for the state. And finally, on September 22nd, I have invited IDU Airport CEO Michael Languth, and I'm working with Councilmember Garamela on an event at the HSNC to host to talk about the airport, his plans for the future, and international flight recruitment. There has been some interest in additional service to India, so that will be there. He'll be talking that with his team, and we're working with other organizations and some Economic Development Board members on the EDPNC to host this event with us. So, it's at 6:30 PM on September 22nd at the HSNC. So, I'll be sending more details on that. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamela, please.
We should let Councilmember Rao go first all the time because he...
Oh, I'm sorry. I really, I really wanted to go last because I enjoy that more.
Well, I won't, I won't. No, you just repeat everything, so I'll try not to repeat stuff. I do, though, also want to wish all our children a happy and successful new school year. Year-round is in session now, and especially those that started high school here in Mooresville at the Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology. So, good luck to all of you. I too was at the Kiran Bazaar, and I just want, I'm wearing some of my jewelry that I, that I got at the, at the event on Sunday, so hopefully they, Kiran made a boatload of money. A portion of all sales went to Kiran Inc. And for those that don't know anything about Kiran, they are a nonprofit that works mostly with the South Asian community on domestic violence issues. They do a tremendous job here in Mooresville and the surrounding area, and they work very closely with our Mooresville Police Department. So, I thank each and every one of them on the board and their staff, they're very small staff that do a mighty job and serve our community. Very proud of their work. I too want to also congratulate Councilmember Garamela on his article in the Southern City Magazine. For all of you that have not read this article, I ask you to please read it. Councilmember Garamela is a true public servant, and he is, you will find in this article that he is a wealth of knowledge to the immigrant community, which is not a surprise. He's an immigrant himself to this country, and when those that come here to Mooresville or even outside of Mooresville for the first time somehow find Councilmember Garamela, get connected to him, and he helps them with their experience to make their, their transition to this country a little bit smoother. So, this really is a fabulous article, so congratulations on that. And then I'm going to end on kind of a sad note. Today was the funeral for Wayne County Deputy Sergeant Matthew Fishman, and so I didn't want the day to go without acknowledging the sacrifice of Sergeant Fishman and his family and his community, his, the deputy, the Wayne County Deputy Community. And it also makes me pause and thank again the men and women of the Mooresville Police Department, the Mooresville Fire Department, that are true public servants and are dedicated day in and day out to making, making sure we are all safe here in Mooresville. So, I thank each and every one of you for your service to the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Garamela, followed by Councilmember Skargun Johnson.
Oh, thanks, Ricky and Steve. You know, I, I want to give a big kudos to Jack Cassidy, who wrote this article. You know, I, he just interviewed me and I talked, and then it was his work which gave like a good flavor, but I appreciate the comments, and a lot of people commented on that. And on the other note, you know, piggybacking on what Liz said, this week is pretty emotional for me because my son leaves to School of Math and Science and heavy packing, everything starting, so I think the same sentiments. A lot of high schools are starting in two weeks, and then people going back to college. That's it.
Councilmember Skargun Johnson, followed by myself.
Well, I hope everybody is getting ready to celebrate Smoresville tomorrow. I know Councilmember Robati is wearing the shirt that is this year's shirt, so I know she's ready, but it's one of the most fun events that we have during the year, and it's uniquely Mooresville, so I'm so happy that we are just one day away from celebrating that event. I also wanted to say good luck and have a great school year to all of our students at whatever level that you're endeavoring to do, from preschool to college. Learning is such a journey, and, you know, it's never an easy thing to do is transform yourself, but you have to have confidence, and I know that each and every one of you will. And my son will have his last year as an undergrad, so I'm really excited to see what next steps he'll be taking along his educational journey. But it's, it's something that all parents and all students really are embarking upon right now. And then finally, that guy to my left, Councilmember Garamela, he is somebody that is a servant leader. He's quiet and understated, but he does understand the value of connecting with people and connecting to the right people. And he's helped so many people in our community and beyond our borders nationally and internationally, and it's so nice to see him recognized in the Southern Living Magazine. So, well done. Thank you for finally stepping a little bit out into the limelight because you really do have a bright shining star. So, thank you.
Okay. Now it's my turn, followed by Councilmember Robati. Congratulations, Councilmember Garamella, on your recognition. I also want to say congratulations and thank you to Wake Tech, Wake County Public Schools, our Public Education Committee, and our hard-working staff for collaborating so effectively to lead to the first day of classes yesterday morning at Morrisville's first high school, the Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology on the Wake Tech campus. We're not only the best place to live, in the best state to do business, but I would argue that Wake County is also the very best place to learn. There's lots of cricket action at Church Street Park in Morrisville this weekend, including our home team, Morrisville Raptors, have two matches on Friday, one each on Saturday and Sunday. This weekend will determine who will make it into the playoffs and the national championships on August 27th and 28th, as I mentioned earlier. There's also a couple of other items carried over from our last meeting where we chose not to do a roundtable. If council is willing, I tried to share this info twice via email and speak to everyone. Two things I'd like to bring up to see if we are willing to ask staff to determine the best method to install some outdoor, long-lasting backboards at Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center and Church Street Park tennis courts. The addition of tennis backboards was suggested by a resident and would increase the utility of our two tennis court facilities and provide our residents the ability to improve their game. Backboards typically do not affect the ability to use the court for regular play. Second item, as educational attainment is of utmost importance to our residents and our business community, I'd request council to consider supporting the My Future NC educational attainment goal. That 2 million North Carolinians should have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree by 2030. The resolution of support does not commit the town to take any actions. It simply helps bring awareness to the need and the efforts to close the gap between available jobs and qualified applicants, and promotes efforts to address that gap. So if any council members would like to opt out of directing staff to look at the backboard viability and the resolution of support, if you want to do so now, that'd be great. Mayor Pretend Johnson?
So, yeah.
I'm confused.
Okay, so we have a process whereby we bring up items, and it's called the Roundtable. And at the last council meeting, this council unanimously agreed, well, maybe you didn't, but the rest of us all agreed that because the meeting was going long, that we would reschedule the Roundtable until September. And so just to remind everybody, that process of a Roundtable is done specifically so that we don't bring up new items during council comments and have major discussion at this time. We save that for the Roundtable discussion, which we agreed would be in September. So I'd ask you to please be respectful of that process and what we all agreed on. And if you don't like that process, I think that's something we can talk about when we talk about working relationships on the 20th.
Okay. Anyone else want to make any comments?
But, and let me just follow on, but this whole opt-out thing is not fair. That's not how we, we do things. And so I would ask you to rescind that because I think there needs to be a discussion on these items. I have questions about them, and I am willing to hold my questions until September and hold my own Roundtable items until September. And I'm sure there are others. I mean, I think Councilmember Ralph said he had some at the last meeting, too. So we got to open it up for everybody or nobody. And I think that's, again, a discussion. If we want to change the process, we can discuss it on the 20th.
Okay, we can discuss that on the 20th. So I'll rescind my request now to try to get these things moving at this time. Does anyone else have any other comments that they want to share?
Aren't we in council comments?
Yeah, we still are. So, no, I just meant on that item before I passed to you. And I don't see any, so Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Okay, that was a weird little interlude, I don't mind saying. Yeah, so I also want to congratulate and extend my good wishes to all of our students that are starting school soon, especially Baby Grace Robati, who is going to college on Monday. How did that happen? Nobody knows. That's a mystery. And I also wanted to say that this is a good time of year to kind of reflect on the fact that not every student goes to school with everything they need to succeed. And we have a Big Brothers and Big Sisters organization right here in Morrisville that is an absolutely fantastic volunteer opportunity for anyone that's looking to help out a child. Also, this is also the time of year when teachers, who are already significantly underpaid in North Carolina, dig deep into their own pockets and start providing for students. So if you know a teacher, I'm sure any teacher you know has an Amazon wishlist or can provide you with a wishlist for their school or for their classroom. And let's not all forget to ask. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have comments this time. I'll try to keep them short because I know I'm last. First thing is, I want to give a shout out to Anita with Doc and C. She and I had a great conversation last week. Doc and C is the, is a youth organization, and it stands for Dedicated to Our Community. It's a group of students who do a lot of service work in our community. They just did a backpack, school supply drive for other students in our community. But a project that Anita and her group are going to be initiating in the coming year is adding additional little libraries at our Smart Shuttle locations. She's already talked to Jerry Allen and Caleb a little bit about this. They are targeting two locations initially, one at the Aquatic Fitness Center and the other at the, in the Savannah neighborhood. I don't know if people in our community have already seen a lot of the little libraries that are at our town parks, like Church Street Park, Indian Creek Trailhead, and I know there's one at Northwest Park. There's probably others in the area as well. So look out for social media announcements. I will also be promoting that. They're going to be doing fundraisers, book drives in the coming year. Lastly, Councilmember Robati triggered a memory about that with the teachers and school supplies, the Wake Ed Partnership is doing a school supply drive right now. And I won't go into a tremendous amount of details, but you can look it all up at their website, wakeed.org, for more information there. And I know I said lastly, but second, lastly, while we're talking about schools, I got to put a plug in for my son Evan, who is starting his senior year tomorrow at Research Triangle High School, just down the road from us. So I'm really excited for him and his last year of high school. And like Councilmember Robati, I don't know how that happened. He used to be, you know, I remember him being three years old and sucking his fingers. And now today, he's got hair on his legs and starting his senior year of high school. So I don't know how that happened either. But a big shout out for all the kids that are going back to school. And that's all I have.
I forgot one thing. Could I just get 10 more seconds? I just wanted to say that nothing that's written in the Southern City article is about Satish is a surprise to anyone that lives in Breckenridge. Everyone there has been the beneficiary of his expertise and his generosity. And so I just want to say congratulations, and it's nice to see you getting some recognition.
Okay. Town Manager Page, anything from staff for the good of the order?
Yes, sir. We have several. It'll touch on some of the themes we've had tonight. So in light of our audiovisual, and we've mentioned Senior Center, your August 23rd council meeting will not be in this room. We have finally received the equipment that we need to upgrade our audio/video. So we have to take the facility offline for several weeks. We have secured an appropriate location for you at the Senior Center. So we will be setting up a meeting in our Senior Center for Tuesday, August 23rd, with audio and video capability. It'll be a little bit different, but we will have that, and we will continue to get you those details as we get them finalized. The agenda is actually much less action items and briefing than some information sharing, so we think it'll work well for that meeting. Also for council, a reminder that you've got your, I'll call it, summer retreat session scheduled for August 20th. We're going to host that at the Historic Christian Church. We've talked a little bit about an outside meeting. It is just not feasible for your facilitator. But we are going to put some tents out. If you want to bring some chairs to sit during breaks or before or after the meeting, we'll have that available for you. Quick straw poll, if I could, on the time that you want to start. We're thinking 30 minutes to get there, get situated, maybe a little bit of continental breakfast, four hours with Donna Warner, and then an adjournment. So best options would be start your meeting at 8:00, start your meeting at 8:30, or start your meeting at 9:00, depending on when you want to be done, and then if you are also interested in us providing any lunch. So that's feedback now, please.
9 o'clock would be great.
Do you want lunch at the end, then?
Yeah, because that kind of pulls everything through from the day. That would be nice.
Okay, I'd go for 8:30 without lunch. This is pretty much free-for-all, 9:00.
9:00.
Steve, Satish?
No, I don't need lunch.
Councilmember Garamella?
I know.
9:00?
9:00, but...
We'll have breakfast then, like between 8:30 and 9:00, so we're ready to go at 9:00. And we'll have, we'll have lunch available for you as well. Again, more details to follow.
Perfect. Is that what you need from us?
I have, I'd like Jeannie to give you a quick comment, and then Brandon will follow.
Good evening, all. Just a quick highlight that I sent you on Monday an email with a leak to fill out the fiscal year '23 budget process debrief. I gave you a little synopsis to sort of help refresh your memories, so hopefully that you'll find that helpful in the survey. It's a simple survey. It should really not take you any more than 20 minutes. Of course, that's really dependent on your style, not Jeannie's style, but your style as individuals. I set it to close automatically on Friday, this Friday at 5:00 p.m. because it is a simple survey, just several questions. So if you just take a moment, do your quick thoughts and ideas, bullets. It's not meant to be a narrative-type survey with long responses. Just get the meat of what you're trying to tell us, and then we'll synthesize that from there, and it'll feed our process as we start to develop the look ahead to the next budget cycle. And we'll use the common themes that we pick up from there, as well as staff feedback as also. I will send a reminder out tomorrow.
Jeannie, could you close it Monday morning? Because this week is really a tough week for me, and I would be very appreciative.
Sure, can certainly move it to Monday. Set it to Friday because sometimes it is, the more time we give folks, the longer it takes. So that's why I made it. So simple and short.
I appreciate it.
But I can move it to Monday.
But I want to devote the right amount of time for it.
To clarify, is that Monday 5:00 p.m., Monday morning? Just so everyone knows.
Very specific.
8:00 a.m.
We will do that Monday morning at 8:00 a.m. I'll set it automatically. So you'll have the weekend. Fair enough? As long as everybody gets the one reminder, and you fill that out, it's at your choice. Okay? Thank you, all.
Thank you. Town Manager Page?
I think that's me, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update or reminder that as of next Monday, the 15th, the state of emergency that was issued by Governor Cooper back in, actually, March 10th of 2020. So we're now two, almost two and a half years into that state of emergency. That state of emergency will expire on August 15th. The good news is for us, it really has no impact on operations based on where we are with you all being back in person, advisory committees being back in person. We've already made accommodations with staff that aren't impacted by the end of the state of emergency. So no real change for us, but just wanted to remind you that's occurring.
Okay. Helpful information. Thank you very much.
So Brandon, this is coming up?
That's probably a separate conversation that we can have.
We can talk about that on August 20th.
What were you referring to? I'm so sorry.
The shields.
Oh, no, I like these.
I like the shields. I don't know.
Okay, excellent. We are now scheduled for a 15-minute break. Do we want to make it 10 minutes, or do we want 15?
10.
Okay, we got a one-hour item after this about CTP. 10 minutes?
One hour?
Or 15?
Let's say 8:55, we'll come back. Split the difference. 12-minute break. All ready? It's 8:55. We're going to come back into a session. We have one work session tonight, a review and prioritization of comprehensive transportation plan action items. Danielle Kittredge, Senior Planner, will facilitate the work session. Ms. Kittredge?
Hi, good evening. So what we're going to be talking about today is the action items that are in the comprehensive transportation plan, looking at some recommendations, prioritizing these. And so what I want to do is just jump in first with a quick reminder of the town's transportation, comprehensive transportation plan. It was approved in 2019. It does provide Morrisville's transportation vision through 2024. It guides roadway, pedestrian, bus school facility improvements. And in this plan, there are 43 recommended action items that were included at the end of the plan. So what I'm planning to do is to take a look at which action items were completed, a review of the ongoing action items, review of the action items not yet completed. This did go to the Planning and Zoning Board for review. So the, there is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board to take a look at having some discussion. And then the goal of the work session is to provide direction on the top three to five CTP action items that staff can begin to work on over the next year. The recommendation that will be coming before you does include five CTP action items. And I did want to mention, as a part of this process, the 43 action items that are in the CTP was just a list. They weren't prioritized in any way, so this is kind of the first, really the first time we've looked at it in more of a comprehensive way, taking a look at these, seeing how far we've come on some of them, and then having the opportunity to say, what are our top priorities that we need to be focusing on in the coming year? So at your table as well, just because there are so many action items, I did print out a handout. It was an attachment in your packet that lists all of them, as well as the narrative that goes along with each one. So if we need to refer to them later on, you have that as well, because there's a lot of them. And preparing this document, especially the narratives that go along with the action items and taking stock of what we've completed, part of this, there's a multi-departmental kind of coordination that happens on a lot of different action items. So I met with a lot of different departments to see things that might relate to those departments, what they've been able, you know, what we might be able to check off the list, as well as, you know, noting in this attachment as well, certain action items will require coordination across departments in order to accomplish them. So just kind of mentioning that as well, it was not, you know, just one individual person listing all of these, reviewing it, having some conversations to inform those narratives as well. Of the 43 action items, five are complete. One is in progress. Nine is, nine are ongoing, and there are 28 to prioritize for action, seven which have been started in some component or a portion completed. One thing to kind of clarify with ongoing projects, these are things that, just based on how they are written, there's not really an end date on them. There's not a kind of check-the-box. They're things that we just continually work on. So I'll highlight some of those projects, those items as well. What I will do is I'll go through and highlight kind of those different categories, as well as roll into some brief descriptions of all of the action items to be prioritized. With the handout that you have as well, if you'd like to circle or mark as I kind of go through those, things that you would want to go back and revisit or ask questions on. We can easily get... we can easily get, if we go one by one and discuss each of those, there's a lot of side conversations and tangents that can happen. So I think kind of the best way to approach it is we'll just go through all of the list. If you can circle and notate which ones you want to revisit, that would be, I think, a helpful approach. So I will just start with the overview of completed, completed action items. I've included a reference. Oh, one thing I do want to mention before I jump into those, in the handout, the first column has a number, and so the number is a reference number only for the action items. So if we're talking about them, we can quickly go back and forth. They are not a prioritization number, so just, just in case there are any questions regarding that. In terms of completed items, I've referenced in the spreadsheet number 39 through 43, and just a few highlights of what came out of the completed action items is the town's public transportation plan in 2019, the implementation of the Morrisville Smart Shuttle, Western WIC traffic signal integration study. We do have made, on an ongoing basis, updates to the UDO for access management, and we have a prioritized list of greenway connections that are shown in the CTP based on existing conditions and future trends. In progress is an ADA transition plan assessing sidewalks, and that's number 38 on the list. Some highlights for ongoing action items, and these are number 29 through 37 in the list. And I've summarized generally kind of all of the different things that this covers, but it's that kind of ongoing continued regional coordination with our different partners, Campo, Go Triangle, TJ COG, you know, participating in the different stakeholder meetings for all of these regional planning efforts, whether it is rapid bus study, commuter rail, as well as our continued effort to coordinate with NC DOT. We do look at new developments as far as in terms of compliance with the CTP, the UDO, making adjustments to the UDO on a regular, on a periodic basis related to transportation. So these are all kinds of ongoing things that we do do, as well as mentioning there is an action item related to greenways and signage, and Parks and Recreation does, you know, have an ongoing maintenance of signage and considering different options. So that's listed here as an ongoing action item as well. Now, moving on to the action items that have not yet been completed, things to be prioritized. There were different considerations that were thought about in kind of selecting the high priority, low priority, and medium priority and low priority. You know, thinking about time, complexity, costs, changing conditions since the CTP was first adopted. Part of our discussion today is there is not a detailed analysis of this action item will take four months, this will take six months, this will cost, you know, X amount of dollars. One of the things we're very interested in is, are these action items something that is, you know, just kind of based on what it encompasses, something that is a high priority that we need to take the next step on? So there could be things that might come back to you at some point in time in the future, but I did want to make sure I mention that, that part of the next step of action items selected will be developing timeframes or timelines in what it would take to accomplish those. And then I did mention that as far as the general categorization of, you know, high, medium, and low priority for the action items. So the high priority for purposes of the discussion today are the top five recommended action items to begin working on over the next year. Then there is a medium priority, which are things that, you know, have, staff does feel has, you know, kind of a, you know, importance as well, and wanted to make sure that was recognized. And then low priority are the things that, just based on what is, you know, what it entails, maybe it's no longer relevant, maybe it's more relevant to approach in a couple of years. So I did want to kind of mention a little bit about the kind of prioritization of these in when we were looking at them. When this went to the Planning and Zoning Board, the Planning and Zoning Board did agree on four of the top five priorities that were recommended by staff. The next slide, I will go over the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board, and then I will also mention which one, you know, what their change was as well. So again, just a reminder, the first column is not a ranking, it's a reference number only. These are the top five recommended priorities to work on over the next year. The first one, and I will mention too, just for more of the sake of space on the slides, all of the titles that are referenced here are the main titles for the action items in the packet. The packet does include a bit more detail in the description, so if I continue to further explain on, some of that may be also included in there as well. The first one is looking at an update to the CTP every five years. The CTP would come up to its five-year cycle in March of 2024. So what we would be looking at with this action item is considering what type of update we would want to have. Is it a small update? Is it a big update? Are there major changes we would want to make that in some way would require a budget request, or is it something that can be done in-house? So taking the time to be able to understand what we would like to do for that five-year update, it's here as a priority. The second item on the list is to develop and adopt an official town policy to guide the funding of betterments associated with NC DOT projects. Most NC, large roadway projects that come in, we do have some type of betterment, whether it's an increased sidewalk width or street lighting. This one would help set up some different policies and making sure, these are multi-year processes, making sure we're setting up funding streams for them. Are we considering different things such as landscaping, where are priorities for those different types of things, and consistency? And there are a variety of routes that this item could take with discussing the policy regarding betterments, but it is something for consistency and making sure we've got sort of the path forward would be useful to have as a, we feel is useful as a top priority. Number three is talking about a review of the list of committed and priority projects on an annual basis, and it's the priority projects within the CTP. We have in, in the past, there's been the two-year STIP cycle, so the State Transportation Improvement Plan. A lot of times, the town council, based on my understanding, has been able to, you know, review and prioritize different projects that kind of filter into Campo and into the prioritization that happens for that project. Those cycles have not really been happening the last couple of years. There's been some different gaps in whether projects are accepted or not. So considering our process kind of independent of maybe the previous mechanisms that were used to make sure that we're looking at our priorities in the CTP every year, what's been accomplished, what hasn't been, what do we want to prioritize? And so more of another procedural type of action item. For number four, this is, it says during road projects, to develop a methodology to determine appropriate crossings to enhancements with marked crosswalks and other types of features. And this is something that we do look at when there is a project, but creating some methodology and processes to make sure we are looking at everything consistently and fairly between the different projects as well, rather than sort of independently and having some of that, more of that structure set up. And then the last one is number five, which is to coordinate with NC DOT to determine the location and scope of recommended intersection improvements, and update or amend the plan accordingly. So make sure I get my, in the CTP, there is a list of 13 intersection-level improvements that were recommended. Some of these are being done with current roadway projects that are planned to be happening in the next couple of years, and some have been studied with intersection improvement, intersection improvement study last year. So really, it's kind of, it's focusing on putting some, putting more focus on where can we, whether it's through grant applications, working with NC DOT on projects, kind of going, working through some of these intersection-level, intersection improvements that were identified. So those are the, the top five recommended priorities. The item that the Planning and Zoning Board did switch in is number four, creating some framework for kind of that methodology for where different types of roadway improvements would be, you know, would be sought after. And what that was swapped for is, which we have moved to the median level priority, is staff was, had originally considered evaluating the Church Street cross-section, which said to provide 14-foot lanes with shared lane markings. The shared lane markings being sharrows, where you have the bicycle and vehicle on the road. This one was brought up, not necessarily for wanting to have sharrows, but the opportunity to evaluate the Church Street cross-section, thinking about the Sawmill Creek Greenway that could be the future greenway, talked about earlier in the meeting, but, you know, thinking about bicycle connectivity and related to Church Street and the potential for the greenway, rather than having sharrows on the road. So that was, that was brought up as a consideration, knowing that there's lots of development happening. Then I will go ahead and move, make sure I get it, move on through just the median priorities, summarizing these here, just provide a little bit more information. So number seven, this is looking at the Engineering and Design and Construction Manual and UDO to account for recommendations in the CTP regarding multi-use paths, seeing where we could make some updates that would make it either consistent or take some of those recommendations and put those into these documents. So that is, you know, just for consistency's sake and making sure we have those, you know, we do have that as a median priority. And then number eight is to amend the CTP. It does say to amend CTP annually to include new transportation network enhancements as they're identified through development review process. And in this one in particular, staff isn't recommending, you know, an annual update, but creating a process by which we could amend the CTP. Right now, we haven't made any amendments to it. I don't know that an annual amendment is necessarily needed, but if there are things, for example, the Triangle Bike Way that comes up, and we feel that that's an important element, we think we want to readily include in our CTP, having those opportunities to do that throughout the five years that say the plan is active before the next update. So we've included that here as something to consider, a way to incorporate changes in the CTP before there's a major update. And number nine is to really streamline the nomenclature used for multi-use paths throughout the town documents, whether we're talking about multi, greenways, side paths, or terminology of multi-use paths. It's more of a, a kind of clarification of these types of wording throughout all town documents. Number 10 is to evaluate unsignalized greenway trail crossings, and also to look at, and see if there's any changes that are needed, but to also look at mid-block crossing possibilities throughout town. I will say that we, when there are roadway projects happening in the vicinity of greenways, improvements are considered, but there hasn't been a comprehensive look at these items throughout town. For number 11, this is advancing the recommendation of the Active Kids Strategic Plan. This plan was approved in 2017, so this particular action item would require taking stock of the recommendations within it, what we've done, what we might want to do. So that is another option to consider as well. Number 12 is to develop a standard cross-section for greenway design to accommodate emergency vehicles. In regard to this particular, this item, the greenways do allow for UTVs for access, whether it's on the greenway paths or the bridges. They are not designed to accommodate fire trucks and ambulances. If there was some type of interest for that, or whether it was just studying more, studying standard, you know, spacing of access points as well, that could be considered with this action item. Number 13 is to develop an intersection safety improvement study, program for all intersections within the town. In 2021, there was a study completed that looked at 10 intersections in town, so there would be the opportunity to consider looking at another subset of intersections. This would require hiring a consultant to do that analysis, but it is an option available And number 14 is to complete a study of transportation-related green infrastructure opportunities. So the town does consider, for example, maybe using previous pavers in some of the different projects, but there might be, and that's just kind of one example of maybe green infrastructure that's been used periodically throughout the town, but there hasn't been a comprehensive look at green infrastructure overall, so that's another option as far as a priority that could be explored further.
Is this something that you could get some support on from the sustainability coordinator at all?
Yeah, and I think any, any of these projects, one of the things that I attempted to do with the handout as well is on the right-hand side is departments involved, and kind of saying like, oh, this would be a multi-departmental effort. There are some cases in which, you know, the planning department might take the lead, or it might be another department that would have to take the lead on those. But yes, I think a multi-departmental effort could be, would be needed on some of these. For, and I believe this is our last slide of median priorities. So number 15 is to develop an access management strategy for Morrisville Parkway. There has been, well, included in the 2021 intersection study, there were several intersections that were included on Morrisville Parkway in that study. There's also been some ongoing work with NC DOT regarding safety-related issues and the, the crossing for the golf carts and having, and having that crossing as well to be signalized. So there's been some different work happening on Morrisville Parkway. This one, this option could be a more comprehensive look if it was wanted to be considered. For number 16, it's to support the efforts of partner agencies and other public and private entities to promote intelligent transportation systems, ITS, or transportation demand management improvements, TDM. For this one in particular, I will mention on the ITS side, we do have some efforts underway with Morrisville's smart cities, you know, smart city initiative and smart corridors, and so doing some pilot transportation items will be in the works. And then there is also in the draft STIP, some future funding for town-wide ITS and signal system upgrades. So in terms of ITS, we may have enough covered right now with that. In terms of the TDM or transportation demand management, if you're not familiar with it, it is non-infrastructure-based initiatives that does help to promote alternative transportation options. So there are some, there are opportunities through TJ COG and NC DOT for matching grant opportunities to promote non-infrastructure activities. In some cases, some people purchase transit passes as one kind of example, or there's different marketing that happens for systems as well. So just making sure you're kind of aware of what TDM is. For number 17, 18, and 19, these are all in some way, they're all slightly different, but very related. It is looking at different grade crossings, separation, emergency access related to the amount of crossings for the railroad, and any of these could be considered together or separate. But I did want to mention, just as a reminder as well, we do have coming up next year, the grade separation project at the railroad crossing in NC 54, the McCrimmon Parkway. grade separation project at the railroad crossing in NC 54, the McCrimmon Parkway flyover project. So that will be eliminating a grade crossing at that location. There's also the potential for future commuter rail that can be coming through Morrisville, which would add an extra track, add extra train traffic. And so there may be considerations for, you know, additional, looking at Morrisville Carpenter Road and NC 54 at that location. So just a few things that could be considered any, under any of those if they were, you wanted to raise them to a higher priority. For number 20, it's to evaluate and develop electric vehicle charging station policy and ordinance requirements. So the town does have, the UDO doesn't require EV charging stations for developments, but if someone does choose to do them, there are some provisions. One of the reasons that we do have this on the list as median priority versus low priority is the sustainability initiatives of the town as well. So this could be considered in with some of that as well. And so the last slide here are the low priority action items. The first one listed here is to ensure design standards to maintain pedestrian activity when building large medians. This refers to, in particular, the CTP has some large median designs in some places in order to facilitate potential bus lanes in the future. And so it's just making sure that pedestrian, there's pedestrian access and crossing. The reason it is a low priority here is anytime there's a median put in or a modification to the median, we're going to be looking to make sure you can safely cross the street. So it didn't seem to raise to a high level for staff. Number 22 is to revisit the non-motorized recommendations within the comprehensive transportation plan to match better with the current Parks and Rec Master Plan. This is listed as a low priority here because we feel it can be addressed in the five-year update to the CTP and making sure that we're considering those. 23 is recommending to rename a segment of Southport Drive between NC 54 and International Drive. When the current CTP was adopted, there was, I guess in the, the previous CTP, there was a road shown connecting portions of Southport Drive. It was removed in the current CTP. And so there is a segment of Southport Drive that does not, will not, you know, kind of connect all the way. It does affect, changing an address would affect two businesses. Staff didn't really see it as a high priority, but it is, it is a recommendation out of the CTP. Number 24 is to create a policy for the provision of landscaping and aesthetic elements related to roundabout construction. A lot of roundabouts that we do see may be internal to developments. If a roundabout is, for example, on an NC DOT road, NC DOT would be in charge of that. This one is looking at provisions for roundabouts that are on town streets, just based on the fact that we don't get a lot of roundabouts and there are a variety of circumstances and ways of evaluating them. It was not recommended as a high, a high priority, but could be considered too. Number 25 is to create a stacking and access policy for new schools located in the town. This does relate to stacking and access on town-owned streets, specifically as it's written as the action item. Roads affecting NC DOT, I mean, NC DOT-owned roads would have some of their own requirements as well. The reason this one is here is it is for affecting new schools. I know we do have a new one in the works, but just based on the fact that we don't have a multiple new schools, it may, the level of effort versus reviewing plans individually may not weigh the amount of work that it would take for this. Number 26 is evaluate incentivizing parking decks for private developments. The UDO does have a few small incentives in it, but I just, parking decks haven't been very popular in Morrisville. It is, if it's something that the town council is interested in looking at more, we can, but just based on the fact that it's not popular, we have left it at the low priority status. Number 27 is develop standard cross-sections for emergency access and incorporate them into the Engineering Design and Construction Manual. For this in particular, I, we do, when plans are being reviewed, refer a lot to the fire department standards with regard to this. And so a lot of those safety concerns are addressed through that, which is why we've left it as a low priority. However, if there is wanting to do a more formal process and incorporating them into the EDCM, that is an option as well. And number 28 is to evaluate and support joint public-private parking options such as park-and-ride lots. One thing I will mention with this one is with the future commuter rail, Go Triangle has expressed interest in looking at partnering with different municipalities with their park-and-ride lots, which will be surface lots, and doing more of the parking decks or parking garages potentially. So this may be something that could be revisited in future years if there are interests, but knowing that the commuter rail's pretty far off. That's the only thing that I have seen that kind of fits in this category, and so that's why it's left as a low priority. So that is kind of a quick summary of all of the items that are in all of the action items. There is a lot more detail we can discuss on any of those. And so what I would be looking for as a part of the discussion for the work session is to have either concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Board's top five recommendation or modifying that recommendation and swapping out different action items. The reason too, we've also selected the kind of three to five top priorities is making sure that they are manageable items to also get started on. We would love to be able to do everything all at once in here and get those all accomplished, but making sure we have focus on those top things that we should be putting our energy and attention to next.
So would it be easiest to ask first if anyone has something that they want to replace into the top five, so some of us don't say we support it and then we have to re-talk?
Why don't we see if we're happy with what's presented to us and what the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Board is?
Okay. Councilmember Scruggs-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Right. So, thank you so much. I, I know you're relatively new in your role, but I, I didn't even think about that. I mean, you were so well-versed in each of these priorities and explained it very well. So, spot on, very good. With that said, the top five priorities for me are standard work. So I would expect through some of, you know, the years that I've served on it, that we are going to have a five-year update. We're, we're going to look for opportunities to update the living document, which is the transportation plan, if we get, you know, more transportation money or road improvements and so forth like that. So I'm generally in alignment with the top five priorities. However, there are a few of the median priorities that I've been waiting to try to elevate the awareness for the need. And it might not be this year, but I really think we're, we're building out as a town and, you know, we don't have too many new more, new roads or new greenways to be built. With that said, safety is a big topic for me. And we have redone Morrisville Carpenter Road. We are going to be doing McCrimmon. And right now, Morrisville Parkway is a very serious safety concern. I would like us to work on number 19 as kind of an umbrella. It may be not a full study, but we don't know how to reroute traffic when some road is down. We, we've had some train incidents in the past, and when, it happened during rush hour. The train incident was the arms were not working properly. It was not necessarily an accident, but it happened during rush hour. And so there was no clear, known rerouting around town. And that would be for the new framework for Morrisville Carpenter Road. I think it would really be helpful for residents and businesses to know with the new road configurations over the last several years, what really is the best way. And then, of course, when we get the flyover, when we get all these others, we'll have to adjust. But just to have something documented a little more to help safety. Morrisville Parkway rises to the top. I know we've gotten some payment in lieu from development to improve that area, but it still is a very, a big concern, and we still have seen a lot of accidents in that area. So I would hope that we could study that and, you know, look for lap funding or look for, you know, Campo to help us out with safety concerns in that area. I would think that they could help us prioritize it a little bit. And something fun, I, I really like the EV charging stations to incentivize that a lot more. We have electric cars all over the triangle, and to encourage that, we need to encourage developers as well as ourselves to support electric vehicles. So I'd like to see that worked with, in alignment with our sustainability coordinator. How can we best serve that need that's emerging? Okay. I did take a quick list, and I tried to trim it down. I didn't say all. I think number 10. Unsignalized greenway trail crossings. Pedestrian crossings are something that we've struggled with. As a town, what's the best type of crossing? What is standard crossing? We have a few of these push-button illuminated flashing crossings, but just to maybe relook at that as we need to have a normal way of working in Morrisville.
And that one may, just to slightly, comment on that may roll into also number four in the, the high priority as well.
Exactly. So some of these are kind of on the borders of your top five. So it's just, but that traffic study of how we move around the town, we've changed enough since the plan has been going on, you know, in the development stages and approved in 2019, that it'd be good to know if there's better reroutings. Thank you.
Any follow-up for her? Are you good?
Yes, and I think one of the things to, I guess, just to also mention, you know, a lot of these can be all kind of connected together in some way as well. And then also mentioning too, you know, with the top priority, should an opportunity, something else come along, along the way that, you know, just because something is a medium or a low priority does not mean we will have complete blinders onto those. But recognizing too, that as things come along, you know, we can work on different items too.
I call them quick wins. So if you can find, you know, we, you mentioned you didn't identify either money or time. So I'm a little blind to that level of effort that it is, but I know that you're going to be very busy with the top five, looking at level of effort and so forth. So I thought I'd just mention a couple of the mediums. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, so I would actually take number one and number three out of the top five based on the fact that, like Vicki said, I mean, we are going to update the CTP every five years. That's, we do that. Reviewing the list of committed and priority projects on an annual basis, I hope we're always doing that. And then numbers 22, 29, and 30, to me, come under kind of that same umbrella where, you know, like, I think that language and recommendations within all of the different plans would always be, would always be uniform. So if that's not the case, then I think like one umbrella project to make that the case kind of covers all of this stuff. So since that gives me two spaces in the top five, I would like to elevate number 20, the evaluate and develop electric vehicle charging station policy. Okay, I can't find it, but the one that I asked you before, if the sustainability people could help you out with that, it might have, oh, it was number 14, that's where it was. I'd like to elevate number 14 also. I think that, I think that the more we know about transportation-related green infrastructure, that positions us well to then implement transportation-related green infrastructure. And, you know, I, this is kind of just a, I guess this is more a point of procedure than anything else, but it's, did we get this in advance, or did we just get it tonight?
Oh, it's an attachment to the, in the packet. I had printed them out because it's a little hard to see on the screen, so that you would be able to kind of flip through them.
It would be really helpful to me if, when we discuss these projects, like, I understand that every single project can't have money and time associated with it, but to me, determining what's in the top five, I can't unlink that from money or time. And so if we're trying to decide what are the top five projects for me, I mean, they're frankly going to be the ones that are going to take the least time and the least money, pick off the low-hanging fruit, and then let's talk about the others. So I do think that would be very helpful information, just going forward, you know, whatever, whatever you have on that, if it could be in here, that would be great.
Yeah, and I will just add on to that, it was an initial consideration, and then there are different variety of routes that some of the items could take, and I think that became one of the, the challenges on that as well.
Yeah, and I mean, you don't want to get scope creep when you're just making a list of projects, like, I totally get that. Yeah, and, oh, I also wanted to say, I totally agree with Vicki, that you've done an amazing job here. I think this is, like, this kind of exercise really takes us in the right direction toward, you know, toward uniformity across policies and programs and plans, and, you know, yeah, just great job. Thank you.
Okay. Any feedback for her?
I think we are good on that one.
Okay, good. So I'm generally in agreement with the, the top five as recommended by the PZB. Some of them do seem that they're kind of just regular business, so I'm not sure if they need a priority, if they're happening in the background, like one and three, as she noted. So, but that's neither here nor there. That's, it just depends on your, y'all's workload. Things that I saw in medium that I would be very interested in elevating, making them high mediums or something, since all the mediums are together right now, or maybe move them into the highest priority would be the 10, bicycle and pedestrian, the unsignalized greenway trail crossings. We've got Airport Boulevard coming up soon, et cetera. The Active Kids Strategic Plan, I'd love to see some low-hanging fruit from that executed, because we've had that around for a while, and the person who led that is no longer with us, so a revisit might be helpful to just sort of get some things going there. For number 13, this is just more feedback. I'd be more interested in improving the 10 that we've already studied, about the intersections, rather than studying everything in town. I think we've identified the ones that council feels are priorities and looking at other ones before finishing the ones that we've looked at. That's just feedback. 14, the green infrastructure, I'm very supportive of. Partner agencies, number 16. I think that's promoting alternative, like carpools and things like that, that could be low-hanging fruit, using partnerships. TJ COG's great for making that happen. And the EVs, as mentioned before by a couple of my fellow council members, I do love the idea of starting to require some EVs during development. I think that there will be a little bit of pushback, but I think in the long term, it serves everyone very well, including the development community, to have those on their sites. to have those on their sites. So those are the things. Oh, one last thing. For number 23, the rename the segment of Southport Drive. I know whenever you do something like that, it's a big hassle. But if that's something that can be going on in the background and just get it done, so get it off the list, that would be ideal, especially since it's only affecting two addresses. Seems like something that would be nice to just do. I recognize now Councilmember Fender. And then Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
Great, thank you for this presentation. I agree with some of the others in that number one and number three just seem like they're business and not necessarily a initiative that would need to be prioritized. And I would like to see, like with number five, doing number 13 along with that with the intersection safety improvements study. I do think that is an area of concern in our town and with a lot of our residents is safety with, at our intersections. I agree with Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson to, we need to look at Morrisville Parkway. That was encompassed. I can't find it now.
Number 15.
Yes, that that should be a high priority on our list. And then, so for, I see like intersections, Morrisville Parkway evaluation as pretty high priority in our town. And then lastly, again, I think number 20, the EV charging stations should be a higher priority as well. That's it.
Okay. Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rowe.
So Danielle, I don't know where, I don't know where you're going to take all this because now you've heard, you've heard multiple different, different top five or top 10. And so maybe we need to, I don't know, we need to discuss and come back again or you need to synthesize everything you've heard and try to come back. But, or end, we can't have everything high. I get that. You can't, you just can't do that. And I appreciate what you said before about just because somebody might, some item might have a medium or a low priority does not mean you're ignoring it. You're going to take those opportunities as they come. So I appreciate you saying that because that's really important to remember. If we're going to stick to top five though, I am in agreement with one and three, what you've heard from others. I think if that's business as usual, that frees up two spots right there. And then I would tell you for me, if I had to fill those two spots, I would just, safety is number one. And there are a lot of these that deal with safety. But I would say number 10, where we talk about the unsignalized greenway trail crossings, that is for me a really high priority because there are several of those and, you know, some we're attending to, some we're not. So I think that would be a high priority for me. And then number 15, when we talk about Morrisville Parkway, would also be a high priority for me, anything related to Morrisville Parkway. And I know we're looking at those intersections and that will help. But that number 15, I think encompasses so much more. And what really gets me in that one is when it's that last comment about end multimodal connectivity. I think that is, is important for that portion of town. And so, and you know, the greenway that everyone up and down Morrisville Parkway, the greenway that they access is that Kribche Hatcher Greenway. And for a lot of folks, they have to cross Morrisville Parkway in order to get to that greenway system. And that in it of itself is like a, it really frightens me. It really frightens me. There are families up and down that road and there are children that walk up and down that road to go to elementary school. And that really concerns me deeply. So those would be, if I had to just pick five, that would kind of be where I'd, and the planning and zoning boards' recommendation as well. I appreciate their efforts too, so I hope that, I don't know what you're going to do with all that.
I think one of the things we can consider too in that top five is if there is any consensus on items to swap out and if, noting too, what those medium-high priorities are and that those are things that you are all very interested as well, that would kind of fall secondary in sort of the list of things that we are working on as, you know, things get done, noting that, you know, some of these projects will be, will be ongoing, will take many months, will have some bit of effort into those. But I think one way that we can't handle it is items, if there are things that want to be swapped out of the top five and then just listing what those other medium-high priorities are based on the conversation that I'm hearing.
Councilmember Rowe, please.
I'm fine with the, excuse me, just a couple of comments. I'm fine with the five. I like, the way I look at it, when I, when I look at the priorities, there's just so many of them. I think, I'm trying to, you know, get to the point of looking big picture. I mean, we have a lot of congestion, you know, a lot of residents complaining about congestion and traffic. So whatever priorities we can invest that are taking traffic off the road, that are signalizing our intersections, making that traffic flow better. Then there's, how do we take people, you know, what are the kinds of investments that we can take traffic off the road, whether it's transit, biking, walkability, particularly with our downtown and those kinds of things? So what are the things that we can do off the list to that? And then the third bucket would be sustainability, green infrastructure, of which you've mentioned, you know, electric vehicles. I mean, these are all things that are more talked about now and particularly with a lot of money coming down through the ARP and the recent inflation reduction, that Climate Change Act. There's going to be, you know, billions of dollars of investment coming in. So just whatever Morrisville can do to partner with other regional organizations to get that funding or move that. But I think that's going to be even more of our priority moving forward. So that's where I may need your help eventually as I go through this list, trying to figure out which of these priorities go into the taking, you know, reducing the traffic congestion, the low-hanging fruit, which are the ones? And then, of course, road construction, you know, at a time when we're not getting as much DOT funding and just the transit and walkability and bike and then the sustainability. With that being said, the one thing that, I don't really know where we go, but when we talk about number 41, evaluating the implementation or improvement of coordinated traffic signal systems on major quarters in the town. I know Councilmember Garamella has brought up in the past many of the intersections, you know, where the lights are just taking very long to change and, you know, automating that and working with our smart cities and smart technologies to make sure that even residents would have apps where they can view, okay, what's the average time that I'm going to be at this signal? Because to me, as I'm driving around, now some of those intersections aren't in Morrisville. They're like in RTP when you're at Cornwallis Road and Davis Drive and it's just there, it's like literally, it's kind of like eight to nine, 10 seconds, sometimes longer when you're there. But that, I think is an important priority to have a town-wide system of coordinating these systems would be, I just don't know where it would go in the priority.
Yeah, and this one too, and this might be just, let's say, beyond the action steps in that, there's the Western Wake Traffic Signal Integration Study that was done, looking at more of a full Cary-Morrisville signal system. There are several signals that are in Morrisville that are on the Cary signal system, providing a higher level of service and NCDOT. The study also looked at a Western Region Coordinated Signal System in which they would all kind of talk together as well. And so there may be actions out of the recommendations of that particular study that are taken into the future as well as considering that in the draft STIP, there is some funding as well for ITS and signal system upgrades as well that might kind of round into some of those recommendations from that study itself. So those are, in terms of action items in this one, kind of that study, I would say, check the box on that, but working with that study going forward and what to do with that would be kind of a next step.
Okay, thank you so much. You're doing a great job presenting. I mean, literally excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella?
Thanks. When I'm looking at this top priority chart, the top three, I feel like they are pretty much BAU that we had to do it. So I'm having a hard time understanding why PCB chose these ones because there are like, is it like reemphasizing that these have to be done? Or is like, I'm trying to understand the reason of top priority.
Is this going back to the, you said the one and three?
No, the chart, the five points, you know, like the five top ones are this chart.
Yeah, and why they picked all of these ones? Or I know there's been some concern with number one and three in particular seeming like they are kind of routine items.
Yeah, exactly, even two, I would say, right? Like, and in fact, I don't like to be boxed into a policy because NCDOT, like the betterments are always changing, you know, based on how it is like, so if we put a policy in place and we have something out of the box there, then we are basically boxing ourselves into our own policies, which is not needed because it's not every time that NCDOT comes and that we have the betterments for me. So like for me, that's like hear it and how it comes, cost is a factor. And of all those things, we can make addition at the time. And also like number five, you know, number five also is something that we work regularly with the traffic intersection improvements and see how we can do it. So I'm kind of really surprised why PCB picked this, which I feel like, other than the four that we have emphasized on pedestrian, bike, bike safety, all the four are pretty much, you do it in our daily job. You know, we pretty much see in every rezoning that is coming and every road improvement that we're doing it.
Yeah, and I guess I could touch base on a couple of these. And it is putting a higher level of attention and effort into accomplishing some of these. There are things that, that do, you know, come about with different projects that are happening. I guess the first who I will address too is number one and three, that's been mentioned a few times and kind of why they're on the list and that they do seem a bit routine. Even for number, number one and preparing for that five-year update, there's a bit of effort that goes into taking sort of stock of things, understanding what we want to do and also making sure we're planning in that time to do it and that that is a high priority. You know, there is not, that I'm aware of any type of statutory requirement that plans are, you know, the plan is updated every five years. And there are places that, you know, we'll go, you know, six, seven, eight, 10 years and go, oh, we need to update our plan. And so we really want to focus on making sure that that does happen. And that similarly, making sure, number three, making sure we are taking that effort every year, not relying on other processes to be able to review and kind of standardize, standardizing that in a little bit more. In terms of number two with the betterments, this can go a variety of different directions. One reason this did come up is, I mentioned the different costs associated with it. So making sure these are getting into, we know a project is happening in several years. We've agreed to betterments, making sure they are getting into the CIP as things that will be funded. But also in some of the NCDOT road projects, there is, for example, aesthetic funding that is available that comes with the project that we can prioritize where we want to put some landscaping or other types of aesthetic improvements. And so as a part of the betterment policy, we could also consider where is the town's priorities whenever opportunities come up? Do we want median landscaping? Do we want focus area landscaping? As well as if there's any types of standardization that we might want to do with crosswalks or I'm calling it like street furniture types of things. But thinking about having some of that framework set up that makes it a little bit easier when the betterment opportunities come along for some of those, because we do follow the CTP if there is looking for a multi-use path. And we just kind of go along with CTP, knowing we want to ask for more of that. But there are opportunities to, say, focus on aesthetics or landscaping that goes along, that having, having that kind of set and having town councils input would be important. And then I did want to mention number five as well. And this is, you know, the different intersection improvements. So we do, you know, as projects are happening, we're always, always coordinating, always have things on our mind with the different intersections and where there can be improvements. But taking a bit more time, working through the list, prioritizing whether it's grant funding that we're going after for some of these, whether it's more specific meetings with NCDOT to kind of talk through these and prioritizing that is something we want to do. So it is a little bit of a challenge of a balance. Some things are one-time things, some things are, you know, may seem slightly routine. There's kind of a mix of things that we did put into there. But I don't know if that, hopefully, answers a little, puts a little bit more clarification onto why some of those are in there. And staff also feeling that some of these, you know, could help some of the processes that we do every day too.
Thank you. I think most of the concerns, I kind of agree, but I was just kind of curious as to, you do one, five is automatic in it and many things that come as part of it. So, and why that should be, like I was looking more from a program recommendation than a policy or like for, you know, CTP, we got to update. It's more of a golden rule that has to be followed. And so I was really hoping PCB would come up with options like on program recommendations instead of how to manage a CTP year. So, okay.
Are there any particular mediums that you thought might rise for help?
Yeah, like especially, you know, certainly we want to go up the chain, Morrisville Parkway because we didn't have at the time and the circumstances changed. That needs to be bumped up. So obviously those ones. And I'm a big fan of like intersection improvements. And like, I know it says complete the project, which it's kind of near and dear as the signalization of things, but we still struggle. And we struggle so bad, like we're not, we're just coming out of COVID. And my fear is when all these policies come back to work, I think we'll start getting a lot of complaints, the signals are not working. And what can we do because, to improve, because Sheetz Gas Station there, you know, like it's bad. And I, I don't, I don't know the answer, you know? Those kind of things bothers me because we are not doing service if the signalization is not good, even if fire have built in the roads there. So that would be high on mine.
Yep, and I appreciate the feedback as well. And I know we do have, everything, everything takes a little while. But, you know, even with the McCrimmon widening project and there's a portion of NC 54, also kind of thinking about the Sheetz location. And there are, you know, changes that do as far as improving signals and different flows of traffic as well. But we can certainly look into and, or I can look into more if there are next steps we are taking with that particular study and sort of how that also fits in with some of the STIP funding that might be associated for Morrisville.
And my other fear is like when you said you're going on a regional, you know, signalization. Right now, we are at the mercy of Cary signalization and any change will take some time. So how can we make it quicker and independent? Because they'll look at their own needs before ours. And that is, that is the reality because we are just subcontracting with them. How would we ensure that we are getting, you know, the needs? What is it? Because I'm sure if we've put 30 seconds delay, that will have ripple effect on the Cary side. And they'll say, no, no, we can't do it, you know? So all these things are so intertwined. But when we are saying, okay, everything DOT, Morrisville and Cary is controlled by Cary, then, you know, I've been struggling, what we can see an improvement on the Sheetz gas station. It's almost two years now, I don't see anything. So how do I basically tell to the residents, we are improving? Because I don't see that, nothing happening there.
I appreciate the feedback on that. Thank you.
So, if I could, if I could make a couple of comments, and, and I agree, perhaps, that Danielle's going to have to have some time to take your input, and do some work with it, and perhaps come back. Regarding the prioritized list, I, I, I mean, Danielle's being silent, yes, some of that work, I'll call it as business as usual. It takes significant amounts of time. And the reality is, is you want projects done, and when we get overloaded with projects, then you get frustrated that things aren't coming back before you. So that's really the purpose of this exercise, is, is you do have to focus on the highest priorities at a limited number, to allow reasonable time for that work to come back to you for consideration. So that really is the goal of the exercise. I just don't want you to, to miss the emphasis of business as usual takes a significant amount of Danielle's time, and, and we just can't get away from that, when you are prioritizing other work that you're asking her to do.
Absolutely. All right. Not just counting that at all, a lot of public input and everything that goes with it.
Thank you for the clarification. So as was noted, you've got a lot of different input, and there's just so much here, it doesn't really lend itself to us, discussing each one and finding support. So if you're able to collate, there was lots of themes, some of these rose up for a number of us. If you could decide what you think the best way forward with those is, maybe come back with a little something that has your top five, and then the high mediums, et cetera, I think we could all be comfortable with that, something that we could bless and keep on moving forward, and we appreciate the work that you're doing every day. Mayor Pretam, your thoughts?
So, yeah, Danielle, I think, and I think you said, when you called it the high medium, so if you need to create another category, I think that probably would make us really happy, too, if that helps. If that's, if that's not helpful, you think that through a little bit, but that might help, too.
Yeah, and I, I feel like, I'm hearing, there's lots of different interests, and I think be able to, you know, document, like, these are the things we want to work on right now, but these are also important to us as well, and where they can be plugged in, you know, after those other ones are done, or something else comes up, and we're able to do those. But I think, yeah, definitely sticking with a, you know, those top three to five, and then having reflect your feedback in those medium highs.
Okay, and, and one last thing, too. Did, did, am I, did I read this correctly? We're going to, we're going to visit this every year anyhow?
That would be as far as, there's different kind of other recommendations within the CTP, as far as whether it's roadways, whether it's greenways, whether it's, you know, like, making sure how we're prioritizing those in terms of whether it's funding or grant projects or things that we're going after, and how are we accomplishing those, is more so the idea with the yearly cycle for those.
Okay, so for the actual projects, not so much the prioritizing what we're doing here right now?
Yes, but we could, I mean, we could also look at, you know, having types of reports, or, you know, something that comes back on, you know, a yearly basis, or looking at what's being accomplished in the CTP. One of the things that I mentioned at Planning and Zoning Board, because I said in a year, we come back and reprioritize this list, and we may also be at the point of updating the CTP. And so we may be looking at whether or not we want to change any priorities, or maybe have more of a discussion related to that as well. So that's another consideration, but I, I think being able to report on progress of the action items would be maybe an important yearly thing to, to consider.
Thank you.
You mentioned the possibility of amending the CTP to include new things, like the Triangle Bike Way, because once those lines are on a map and adopted in the CTP, the developers have to make those things happen, correct? So I think that would be an important thing to think of as well. And I think just overall, these top five are big, kind of fuzzy, aren't really project-oriented, and I think we all focused in on a couple of things that are very tangible, so that's kind of the balance there. This is the work that has to be done, these top five, and the actual tangible projects that show progress. I think those were, what caught my eye, that sort of demonstrates our values about getting things done. So I think this was really helpful. This was really useful. We dug into a lot of really good information, so thank you for accumulating all this and presenting this so well, as was mentioned by a number of us. Is there anything else you need from us tonight?
I will try my best to pull all of this together in something that hopefully will work for everyone, so I will come back with that, I guess, if there was any, you know, if there was any, you know, kind of final feedback that anyone wanted to provide as well.
And you'll do that by the next meeting?
A Friday?
Yeah, I think my, I think my peak item is due tomorrow.
You're kidding. Don't listen.
So one, one thing I'd say is that Ms. Hooks is really good at taking our feedback that's come from different places and accumulating it, so she might be able to help you kind of make this, move this forward for you. It might be a plus.
We have confidence.
She might have already done the budget next year.
So that's just a thought.
Danielle, you can do it. We have confidence.
You've been volunteer, Jeannie.
No, it won't be back in two weeks. We'll, we'll, we'll get it moving for you.
We know, we know.
So is there anything else for the good of the order? Town manager page?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for watching. That passed unanimously.
Thank you, Danielle.
10:05.
Your question?